I will conclude by touching on the three foundational virtues that will fuel our journey throughout the school year. Last school year, we witnessed a number of students and staff members recognized for their level of excellence. We also saw the completion of numerous projects that enhanced the work and learning environments for our staff and students. In the area of technology, the district was able to complete the following projects. And in the area that many people pay attention to, student outcomes, we accomplished the following. Preliminary data shows an increase in graduation rate and A through G rate. Meanwhile, final data shows math scores increasing by 3% and reading scores increasing by 3%. While 25 of the 29 schools increased in either math or reading, 14 schools increased in both math and reading. A big congratulations to these schools for keeping our district moving forward. For the 2019-2020 school year, the focus will continue to be on math, reading and literacy, with special and deep attention paid to African-American students, students with special needs, and English learners. We will continue to expand STEAM education and promote and invest in creativity and innovation among students and staff alike. And we will further our efforts to ensure the successes we have experienced with PBIS are consistent throughout the school district. I want every teacher and every other staff member to feel that the district values expectations for students and the sanctity of the classroom. But I want to make sure the district does not revert back to the days when students, for the most part, were disciplined with suspension for pretty much anything, even the most trivial of infractions. Remember that behaviors are learned, and as educators, we have a moral responsibility to shape the conditions that will enable students to make appropriate decisions all the time. These conditions may include modeling the behavior, being mentors to students, and offering opportunities for students to reflect and understand that poor choices lead to consequences. In accord with the district's mission, which as you can see includes ensuring each student achieves personal and career fulfillment, and safe and engaging learning environments, and the first parameter in our strategic plan, which states, "We will make all decisions in the best interest of students." When serving students, we are compelled to practice high expectations for ourselves. And for those who deal with student behavior, it means using alternatives to suspension. And when suspension is necessary, it must be accompanied by actions that address the behavior so that the behavior does not reoccur. A suspension with an independent return to school often invites repeated behavior. Compassion. This means to practice commendable customer service, to be polite and respectful to others, to show compassion by doing something cool for someone in need, like buying someone coffee just because you want to, be impulsive and uplifting, and smiling and greeting those you encounter with kind words. Freedom. Freedom means being at peace with yourself. Your values are centered and your purpose is noble. It means you know your job better than anyone else. It means being a risk-taker, one who explores and takes chances. It means you are creative or innovative. You challenge the status quo. You are different. But as educators, it means being free in the spirit of the strategic plan, which means to be free in the best interests of students. Kindness. Rialto kindness. Kindness in its fullest expression exists when its two elements, empathy and personal honor, become one. Empathy means having the capacity to understand or feel what another person is experiencing. It is exemplified by being good, helpful, and considerate towards others. Essentially, it means being a nice and caring person. Personal honor is to have self-discipline and respect for one's conduct. It is exemplified by being punctual and having presence and commendable work ethic. For educators, honor is exercising one's full powers to create conditions that generate new opportunities. It means being at work and on time every day while having agency to create policies, formations, or lessons that will have tremendous and lasting impact on others, especially students. So there you have it. Some highlights from last year, our focus for this year, the district's commitment to STEAM and creativity, our efforts to maintain high but sensible expectations for student behaviors, and our three foundational virtues, which includes kindness, the type of kindness that we in Rialto aspire to generate. Hello everyone and welcome to the 2019-2020 school year. Yes, the 2018-2019 school year came and went, and here we are, again initiating what promises to be another exciting and productive school year. For those of you new to the district, welcome to the Rialto family. In this address, I will highlight some of the many successes we experienced as a school district this past year, followed by a list of the five major areas we will focus on over the coming months. I will conclude by touching on the three foundational virtues that will fuel our journey throughout the school year. Last school year, we witnessed a number of students and staff members recognized for their level of excellence. We also saw the completion of numerous projects that enhanced the work and learning environments for our staff and students. In the area of technology, the district was able to complete the following projects. And in the area that many people pay attention to, student outcomes, we accomplished the following. Preliminary data shows an increase in graduation rate and A through G rate. Meanwhile, final data shows math scores increasing by 3% and reading scores increasing by 3%. While 25 of the 29 schools increased in either math or reading, 14 schools increased in both math and reading. A big congratulations to these schools for keeping our district moving forward. For the 2019-2020 school year, the focus will continue to be on math, reading and literacy, with special and deep attention paid to African-American students, students with special needs, and English learners. We will continue to expand STEAM education and promote and invest in creativity and innovation among students and staff alike. And we will further our efforts to ensure the successes we have experienced with PBIS are consistent throughout the school district. I want every teacher and every other staff member to feel that the district values expectations for students and the sanctity of the classroom. But I want to make sure the district does not revert back to the days when students, for the most part, were disciplined with suspension for pretty much anything, even the most trivial of infractions. Remember that behaviors are learned, and as educators, we have a moral responsibility to shape the conditions that will enable students to make appropriate decisions all the time. These conditions may include modeling the behavior, being mentors to students, and offering opportunities for students to reflect and understand that poor choices lead to consequences. In accord with the district's mission, which as you can see includes ensuring each student achieves personal and career fulfillment, and safe and engaging learning environments, and the first parameter in our strategic plan, which states, "We will make all decisions in the best interest of students." When serving students, we are compelled to practice high expectations for ourselves. And for those who deal with student behavior, it means using alternatives to suspension. And when suspension is necessary, it must be accompanied by actions that address the behavior so that the behavior does not reoccur. A suspension with an independent return to school often invites repeated behavior. Compassion. This means to practice commendable customer service, to be polite and respectful to others, to show compassion by doing something cool for someone in need, like buying someone coffee just because you want to, be impulsive and uplifting, and smiling and greeting those you encounter with kind words. Freedom. Freedom means being at peace with yourself. Your values are centered and your purpose is noble. It means you know your job better than anyone else. It means being a risk-taker, one who explores and takes chances. It means you are creative or innovative. You challenge the status quo. You are different. But as educators, it means being free in the spirit of the strategic plan, which means to be free in the best interests of students. Kindness. Rialto kindness. Kindness in its fullest expression exists when its two elements, empathy and personal honor, become one. Empathy means having the capacity to understand or feel what another person is experiencing. It is exemplified by being good, helpful, and considerate towards others. Essentially, it means being a nice and caring person. Personal honor is to have self-discipline and respect for one's conduct. It is exemplified by being punctual and having presence and commendable work ethic. For educators, honor is exercising one's full powers to create conditions that generate new opportunities. It means being at work and on time every day while having agency to create policies, formations, or lessons that will have tremendous and lasting impact on others, especially students. So there you have it. Some highlights from last year, our focus for this year, the district's commitment to STEAM and creativity, our efforts to maintain high but sensible expectations for student behaviors, and our three foundational virtues, which includes kindness, the type of kindness that we in Rialto aspire to generate. Hello everyone and welcome to the 2019-2020 school year. Yes, the 2018-2019 school year came and went, and here we are, again initiating what promises to be another exciting and productive school year. For those of you new to the district, welcome to the Rialto family. In this address, I will highlight some of the many successes we experienced as a school district this past year, followed by a list of the five major areas we will focus on over the coming months. I will conclude by touching on the three foundational virtues that will fuel our journey throughout the school year. Last school year, we witnessed a number of students and staff members recognized for their level of excellence. We also saw the completion of numerous projects that enhanced the work and learning environments for our staff and students. In the area of technology, the district was able to complete the following projects. And in the area that many people pay attention to, student outcomes, we accomplished the following. Preliminary data shows an increase in graduation rate and A through G rate. Meanwhile, final data shows math scores increasing by 3% and reading scores increasing by 3%. While 25 of the 29 schools increased in either math or reading, 14 schools increased in both math and reading. A big congratulations to these schools for keeping our district moving forward. For the 2019-2020 school year, the focus will continue to be on math, reading and literacy, with special and deep attention paid to African-American students, students with special needs, and English learners. We will continue to expand STEAM education and promote and invest in creativity and innovation among students and staff alike. And we will further our efforts to ensure the successes we have experienced with PBIS are consistent throughout the school district. I want every teacher and every other staff member to feel that the district values expectations for students and the sanctity of the classroom. But I want to make sure the district does not revert back to the days when students, for the most part, were disciplined with suspension for pretty much anything, even the most trivial of infractions. Remember that behaviors are learned, and as educators, we have a moral responsibility to shape the conditions that will enable students to make appropriate decisions all the time. These conditions may include modeling the behavior, being mentors to students, and offering opportunities for students to reflect and understand that poor choices lead to consequences. In accord with the district's mission, which as you can see includes ensuring each student achieves personal and career fulfillment, and safe and engaging learning environments, and the first parameter in our strategic plan, which states, "We will make all decisions in the best interest of students." When serving students, we are compelled to practice high expectations for ourselves.
Do we have a motion to adjourn closed session?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Time is 7:05. Open session is now reconvened. At the direction of the Board of Education, board meetings are recorded, broadcasted, and streamed live and may capture images and sounds of those attending the meeting. Tonight, we have a special presentation from Casey Cougars. But first, let's have Casey Elementary School student Jonathan Aguirre lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jonathan. And now, Mrs. Fassella's fourth grade students will sing a song that they sing every morning in her class to get motivated about learning. This song is titled "Hall of Fame Script." So take it away, Cougars.
Yeah, I could be the greatest. I could be the best. I could be the king come banging on my chest. I could be the world. I could be the war. I could try to handle banging on his door. I could throw my hands up. I could be the rock. I could build a mountain. I could break rocks. I could be the master. Don't wait for luck. Get it, get it, get it, everybody go stand in the hallways. And the world's gonna know my name. Cause the bird of the rising. And the world's gonna know my name. And I would be the boss of the hallways. I could be the citizen. I could run the mall. I could walk straight through wolf with a smile. I could be a hero. I could get the goat. Break it out where he says the letter could be wrote. Do it for my people. Do it for my pride. I've been in the hallways, but never even tried. Do it for my country. Do it for my name. Cause there's gonna be a day we would stand in the hallways. And the world's gonna know my name. Cause the bird of the rising. And the world's gonna know my name. And I would be the boss of the hallways. Be the champion. Be the champion. Be the champion. Be the champion of the hallways. We should be teachers, be politicians, be leaders. We will be teachers, be astronauts, be champions, be truth seekers. We should be teachers, be politicians, be leaders. We will be teachers, be astronauts, be champions, stand in the hallways. And the world's gonna know my name. Cause the bird of the rising. And the world's gonna know my name. And I would be the boss of the hallways. I could be the best. I could be the king come banging on my chest. I could be the world. I could be the war. I could try to handle banging on his door. I could throw my hands up. I could be the rock. I could build a mountain. I could break rocks. I could be the master. Don't wait for luck. Get it, get it, get it, everybody go stand in the hallways.
I loved how much fun the teacher was having.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Fassella, fellow teachers, principal, Mr. Velez, assistant principal, Mr. Bashaw, and of course, our parents and guardians who are all here tonight to support our talented students. Go Cougars! This board member just doesn't get any better.
It was wonderful to see the teacher was having so much fun leading them.
And with that, do we have a report out of closed session?
Yes, we do. In closed session, the Board of Education accepted the administrative appointment of Dr. Maria Ordaz, elementary assistant principal. The roll call vote was unanimous. The Board of Education accepted the administrative appointment of Maria Angie Lopez, agent, facilities and planning. The roll call vote was unanimous. The Board of Education accepted the administrative appointment of Dr. Patricia Chavez, lead academic agent, secondary literacy, learning, and innovation. The roll call vote was unanimous. And the Board of Education accepted the administrative appointment of Martha DeGortari, executive administrative agent. The roll call vote was unanimous.
Congratulations, Martha.
Give a round of applause to all of the... Next, we go to adoption of tonight's agenda. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Before we adopt tonight's agenda, do we have any pulls? No pulls or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And next, we go to item B, presentations. And first, we have Courage, Rialto Unified School District Bullying Prevention. Mr. Adam Wagner, agent with Child Welfare in attendance, will be presenting.
Well, good evening, President Montez, Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Avila, and viewing audience. My name is Adam Wagner, agent, Child Welfare in attendance. Child Welfare in attendance being under the umbrella of Student Services here in Rialto. And what I want to talk to you tonight about is courage. So you see on the slide, the students holding up the word courage and really kind of exemplifies what we're going forward with in Rialto's bullying prevention initiative. And we'll talk a little bit more about that and about the logo and the branding as we go forward. But I wanted to start with some context and talking about why now, why this year, why we're going forward with this. Well, obviously, Rialto not being the only district or city dealing with the issue of bullying. Cause nationwide, about 20% of students report being bullied at some point, ages 12 to 18. We've seen over the last several years, public reports of alleged bullying or bullying that's happened in Rialto through the media or on the television. Concerns that were raised in all three school forums echoed the issue of bullying in our schools and in the district. And of course, as we've experienced over the years, a shift in our approach to address social-emotional issues and treating trauma. So we start with, of course, our strategic plan. And when you look at our beliefs, and of course, this isn't all encompassing, but really what jumps off the page is when we talk about, we believe that all people have equal inherent worth. We talk about the strength of our diversity. Each person deserving to be treated with respect and the ability to contribute to the good of the community, which we believe obviously directly support the need for our Courage campaign. And we look at the mission and we talk about a vital system that's distinguished by, and these three that are highlighted, safe and engaging learning environments that we all want for our staff and for our students. Effective family and community involvement and of course, appreciation of cultural diversity. And our strategies, in strategy four, it addresses socially and emotionally healthy students. Strategy five, welcoming and friendly school environments. And strategy seven, talks about social-emotional resources for students and families, which are key when we talk about addressing bullying. And what I don't have a slide up there, but talking about parameters, is making decisions, all of our decisions based in the student's best interests. So we come to the golden circles. If you've heard of the golden circle, we always start with the why, cause that leads what you do and how you do it. So when we talk about the why, we believe that Rialto Unified Schools are a safe place for students and staff to thrive in a bully-free environment. And how we do that, we do that through educating our community on the power of kindness and courage. And obviously, we've heard our superintendent talk about kindness and really the push in the district of kindness, which goes along obviously side by side with courage. And then how we, the what, being kindness and courage initiative, and that's what we're talking about tonight. So the features of the initiative, we started with a committee, kind of like a core committee of safety, health services, our registration department, obviously all of student services, and the stakeholders to really begin launching this initiative. And then we want to look at policy, procedures, and system, things that are currently already in place, but how do we make it better? How do we make it more accessible? How do we make it more fine-tuned? And we talk about prevention, what ways we want to make sure that we're addressing bullying before it happens. And of course, if we do have instances of bullying, how do we intervene? How do we look at, you know, restoring relationships and having restorative practices? And of course, how do we market this? Cause we want all of our staff, all of our community to know, all of our students to know what we're doing to address the issue of bullying. And then metrics, of course, you can't have any program or initiative or campaign without a way to measure it and a way to see if it's successful. And ways that we need to improve and just, we want to have that backup, that data. So it starts, we want everybody really to know, of course, and be consistent with, is the definition of bullying. And really, it involves three elements. We're talking about if it involves harm. So we're talking about emotional harm. We're talking about physical harm. Is there an unfair match? So the second element, whether that be social standing of students. What are we talking about? Older students versus younger students. If there's that unfair match quality there. And repetition, is it continuing multiple times over a period? So if those three elements are present, we have a situation of bullying. And again, there may be incidents, there may be conflicts, and doesn't mean we don't address those and take them seriously. But of course, we want to address the true definition of bullying, cause a lot of... because a lot of times, there's confusion on what exactly bullying is. A lot of things get labeled bullying, and so we want to make sure we keep, we kind of come up with a clear definition. And we want to improve the system. Currently, our schools and our district office buildings have legal notices. They're melancholed, and it talks about what district's responsible for. It identifies what ed code says about bullying. So we wanted to kind of, again, brand that with our logo at the top. Have elements of the legal notice, and even at the bottom, a QAR code that kind of, and we'll talk about this in a moment, but it talks about, it has a direct link to a bullying complaint form. So we want to add this, similar to our customer care campaign. We want these posters to stand out, be colorful, and be noticeable to those who see it. Currently, we have these in our offices, in our schools, front offices, are paper bullying complaint forms. So again, it has, you know, what the situation is, what kind of bullying is being reported, name of the student, if they choose, it can be anonymous. And again, this is what we currently have in place. We wanted to take that a little step further and have, of course, with technology and the way it's progressing over time, we want to have easier access. So all of our school websites have a button at the top. As you see the arrow there, where you can click on it, and it comes up, well, the Google form that you can fill out, same information you're putting on a paper form, but now it's available online, putting the information in, submitting it. Therefore, the person who, whether it be a student, whether it be a parent, is submitting it, they'll get their own form back completed, as shown on the slide, as well as administration from the school will receive this, and our office at Child Welfare and Attendance will receive it as well. So once that's submitted, that initiates the timeline for schools to investigate, document, and then communicate those results in writing to the person that's complaining, whether it be a parent or student. Of course, they have that 10 days. So it's important for all of us to know, to have that standard for our administration and for our school district. Of course, that's already been in place, but we want to make sure that's clearly communicated to our schools and to our parents and our community. So again, with prevention, just a few things. We're talking about assemblies, like a mandated assemblies, because in the past, our safety department has offered assemblies that deal with prevention, bullying. But now, we have the expectation that all schools make use of that resource. A commitment, activities at these bullying, these bullying prevention assemblies, or whether activities at schools, and again, done from K through 12. And then we really want to address Anti-Bullying Month. Really having a focus, almost similar to Red Ribbon, where we have a full week dedicated to addressing bullying prevention and the issues that bullying presents to our students. Be unified in how we put that forward, bring out the color, with the color of blue, which addresses bullying. And so we want to make that a big deal in our district. Of course, there'll be parent trainings available, staff development for our teachers. Because when we talk about bullying, we're not only talking student to student, we're talking about adult to adult, we're talking about adult to student. There's different variations to bullying. So we want to make sure all those elements are addressed. And intervention, of course, if we do have instances of bullying, we want to have a resolution, we want to have restorative justice. Consequences for the bully, but also, how do we, if it's possible, have a reunification of the relationship. If not, of course, have an options of support for the victim, and then behavior support for the bully. And then metrics, and these are only a few, again, this may grow over time as we continue to grow this initiative. But we're looking at our PBIS self-assessment surveys. As we take inventory from our students, how they're feeling, how's their social-emotional health. Panorama Education Survey of Students, ed code violations. I know through our student information system, we can pull how many 48900R, which directly deals with bullying, instances are in the district. We can track those bullying complaints, as we discussed with the submittal of the complaints. And of course, every two years, we have our students take the California Healthy Kids Survey. So that's another indicator of how we can have the metric for that. So really, we just want our students and our staff and our community to be courageous, be able to stand up and speak up against bullying. So I thank you for your time this evening, so I can take up for us any questions. It's our end.
May I, Mr. President?
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Wagner, I like this, but it's extremely broad. It makes me, gives me the impression we're going beyond the definition of bullying. I didn't see or hear a definition, a legal definition of bullying. Do you have that for us?
I don't have it written here, but obviously, ed code has a specific definition of bullying, which has elements that were discussed, but obviously, it goes a little further in elements of sexual harassment, hate violence, intimidation, those kind of things.
Well, in particular, over the past years, there's been instances where I've gotten complaints that do not meet the legal standard. My kid was harassed, bullied, and it doesn't meet the definition of bullying. So are we going by the definition of bullying, or are we broadening that?
Well, we're going by the definition, of course, if we're going to label a situation, like a finding of bullying. So when we talked about response from the school, we're having either a finding or not a finding of bullying. So of course, we want to address any incident. So even if it is an issue, if there's a conflict, we're still going to address it, we still want to take it seriously. But again, if we're going to label it bullying, and if we're going to, you know, put an incident into the system as bullying, and be labeled an R incident, you know, 48900R, of course, we're going to go by the education code definition.
Okay. Dr. Avila, could we possibly put that definition on the website? Since we don't have it now for the community, that way they'll know exactly what bullying is and is not.
Right. And it's also part of that legal notice, which is on our website. But having it more clear and upfront, I agree.
Since we have this presentation, thank you, it's good.
The other thing to consider is, the school sites should have some type of discretion to what they consider bullying or not. You know, obviously, sometimes, you know, one student saying, another student called me dumb-dumb, and it's bullying, might not qualify. But, you know, if it's, leads to verbal abuse, or, you know, even physical abuse, or even emotional abuse, it, you know, needs to be looked at.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Adam.
Next, we go to item C, comments. We'll begin with public comments from the floor at this time. Any person wishing to speak on any item not on the agenda will be granted three minutes. And we'll begin with Felicia Jones.
Good evening, distinguished board members, superintendent. My name is Felicia Jones. I am the Associate Director with Congregations Organized for Prophetic Engagement, Cope. And I'm also a parent, Eisenhower High School, and delighted to be, yes. Delighted to be here tonight. I am speaking on something that is not on the agenda, but something that I think is critically important to this school district and to parents and students across the state. You may know that the Cal State system is actually proposing to extend the A through G requirements by requiring that incoming freshmen take four years of math for admission into the CSU system. Their rationale is that they want to make sure the students are more prepared. However, several of us, there are more than 60 organizations across the state that are really opposing this proposal, because it presents serious equity challenges, things that we know and feel in our schools every day, that we know, that we feel the math teacher shortage. We also know that there are access gaps in our schools across the state. And we know that students actually use a fourth year sometimes to remediate courses that they actually need to complete just the three-year requirement, math requirement that currently exists.
Just to graduate.
Just, absolutely. So we, we're deeply concerned about that. There's an important conversation that's going to happen tomorrow at the CSU Chancellor's office. And I am here, again, urging, one, everyone to pay attention to this issue, but specifically for our school districts to pay attention to this, because it certainly will impact the school district. But we know that it will impact students of color largely. In fact, there's a report that was released today that said that if this proposal should pass, we are looking at enrollment for students of color, Latino and Black students specifically plummeting in the CSU system. We're already declining in enrollment. We're looking at a 19% drop for Latinos, 23% drop for African-American students. And for white students, 18%. So we're, this is certainly not an issue of color, though we know that it is students, low-income students of color and students, low-income students at large, will be impacted by this issue. So we're urging you to join other school districts as you learn more about this issue, pay attention to it. But also, hopefully, you will join other school districts who are opposing this proposal, and really elevating all the equity concerns that are raised, and certainly, what we know to be true of a math teacher shortage crisis that we are experiencing, just an overall challenge with math that unfortunately has gone long overdue, but this is an important time to discuss it, but we don't want to do harm to our students. So thank you so much for the time, and hopefully, your way in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we go to Celia Salaya.
I feel your pain.
Buenas noches, miembros de la mesa directiva.
Buenas noches.
Buenas noches, miembros de la mesa directiva. Presidente, Mr. Montes. Vice Presidenta, Ms. Kelly. Superintendent, Dr. Avila. Audiencia. Soy Celia Saravia.
I am Celia Saravia.
Y represento al grupo de apoyo de padres de niños especiales.
And I represent a support group of parents of children with special needs.
Y esta noche vengo para agradecerle a Miss Rhea MacGyver.
Tonight, I'm here to thank Miss Rhea MacGyver, and I'm sorry, I don't know how to pronounce her name.
Y a Miss Bridget Elie. Porque solucionaron un problema pero rapidito.
Because they solved the problem very quickly.
Y eso nos encanta a los papás saber que contamos con los administradores de nuestro distrito.
And we, the parents, love to know that we can count on the administrators in our districts.
Y eso es por el superintendente que tenemos.
And that's due to the superintendent that we have, by good.
Gracias a Dr. Avila, también agradecerle a Dr. Avila por la confianza y seguridad que le da a sus administradores, a los padres, y también a los estudiantes.
And thanks, Dr. Avila, for the confidence and the trust that he gives the administrators, the teachers, and the parents as well.
Y a nuestro board. La verdad estamos bien orgullosos de nuestro board, de nuestro superintendent, de nuestro distrito en general.
Truthfully, we're very proud of our board and superintendent, and our district in general.
Por la forma en que la que están trabajando.
For the manner in which they're working.
Por tomarse bien en serio el problema que tenemos con el bullying.
For taking quite seriously the problem we face with bullying.
Que no es particular solamente de nuestro distrito, sino que en todas partes está pasando eso.
Which isn't exclusive to our district, rather than it's happening all over.
Pero a nosotros, los padres de aquí de Rialto, nos da la seguridad con ustedes cuando ustedes abordan estos temas.
But you do give us, the parents here at Rialto, the confidence that you are addressing this issue when you do it, while you're doing it.
Gracias y a seguir trabajando todos juntos.
Thank you, and let's all continue working together.
Next, we go to Ms. Brenda Parker. Oh, I apologize, is this on the agenda? I apologize. Okay, then go ahead. It's checked off, item on the agenda. We'll go to that next. If it's on the agenda, we'll go to it next. If it's not, you can, you can go ahead.
It's cuttable. I can come down with you later, too.
Okay, okay, then. Okay, then. Then we'll just consider it on the agenda. Next, we go to... Next, we go to Justin Bailey.
Good evening, board presidents, board members, superintendent, staff, and viewing audience. My name is Justin Bailey, and I am a high school senior at Myler High School. And I am coming to you this evening to give you the opportunity to be a part of supporting a wonderful STEM-based activity that has educational components, and as well as providing physical activity in a safe environment. So you ask, what is this STEM-based activity? Well, it's roller skating. Yes, four wheels, inline, either or. If you haven't tried it, you should come to Cal Skate Grand Terrace from 12 to 6 on Labor Day, and you can see, it is an amazing, fun activity. So what I'm asking for you to do is, this evening, is to support me in a skate-a-thon that will be happening on September 15. You can either make a straight donation, or you can sponsor me for an amount of money for each lap that I skate. We will be skating a goal of 200 laps, and I will be providing you with a piece of paper that tells you the link that you can go to, as well as sending you an email with this link. If you would like to donate, it would be much appreciated. In closing, I would like to thank all of those who have heard the words I've spoken this evening for the support and time. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Speaking of skating rooms, anybody remember Holiday Skate? I miss that place.
I remember falling down skating.
I miss that place. All right. Next, we go to... Myrna Reese.
Good evening, board, audience, and superintendent. Today, I'm here to speak about PTA, once again. This is a good thing, even though I kind of heard some concerns that, I guess I can't fill out another paper and then come back and get another three minutes, like Brenda. But anyways, I want to give you good news. We are going to be hosting, to have lunch at the district, which is a fundraiser that we're going to be having for scholarships for seniors. Last school year, we were able to give four scholarships to four seniors, which they were really thankful, and, I mean, it was a great thing just to see their smiling faces, and they couldn't believe it, that they got this check from PTA. So this time, we're going to be asking for your donations, as well as your presence. But if you can't be there, we'll still take your donations. We are going to be, it's going to be, it's lunch at the district, we're going to be having tacos. So September 5, and it's from 11 to 1, and it's going to be here at the West Wing. So you're more than welcome to come. And we are actually going to be also delivering to schools. We're having the schools that have PTAs, they are taking orders, and because the teachers only get 30 minutes for lunch, we want to make sure that they get, you know, to eat, and not just drive over here. So we're going to be having runners back and forth to the schools, so that way that our teachers can, can enjoy some tacos, and also, you know, contribute to a great cause, which is our seniors. And this year, we want to, we have a goal, you know, to raise at least $5,000, because we want to give the more, the better. Last year, we included the fourth high schools. Myler, you know, was one of them, who never really gets recognized, they're kind of left behind. But we want to make sure that they're back on the map. So we want to make sure that, like I said, that this is happening. So I'm going to go ahead and give flyers to, to the board members. I think I have enough. And you can actually reserve your tickets if you email rialtocouncilpta@yahoo.com, and we'll, we'll take your orders from there. But hopefully, we'll be able to see you here. We're going to have some, a little bit of entertainment, and it's going to be a fun activity that you'll be able to enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you. And since it's for scholarships, we're going to go ahead and hold this up for Mr. Steele to try to zoom into that if he can. If not, all of the information was already given. All right. Next, we go to items on the agenda, and we'll begin with Ms. Brenda Parker.
Good evening. Good evening to my awesome superintendent, board members, and everyone else here. Thank you for having me. I am here to speak on behalf of the SMART program that we are having into our district, and we are, we're hoping that they are able to come in full strong. As some of you may know or may not know, we are only in the third week of school, and we already have... we already have a large disparity gap of suspension amongst our African-American students to all other students in the district. And we, as DAYPAC, are hoping that with this SMART program coming in, it will help with interventions, resources, and support to curtail that suspension. Oh, I guess I need to tell you guys who I am. Brenda Parker, I am the president of DAYPAC. And so, I am really excited about the work that we're going to be doing this year while we are also on track with the district to address equity issues here in the district for our African-American students, our African-American parents, and we're hoping to partner and to continue such great works here in the district for our African-American students. So, once again, with this disparity already starting in our third week of school, with SMART coming in, with us partnering together, our hopes are that we will be able to curtail that, and we don't end with such a horrible large number of our African-American students being suspended. We are, our very first meeting will be September 10th. That is a Tuesday instead of a Thursday at 6:15 at the PDC. We want to invite all of our African-American parents, staff, and students out because we have a great plan for this year. We are looking forward to doing great things in this district for this school year and thereafter, and we most definitely need your support, your resources, and your help, and your worker bee. Whatever your profession is, whatever your craft is, whatever your expertise is, we need you. Because our goal is to make sure that our African-American students are successful in not only in this district but in life. So, come partner up with us. We are looking forward to having you in our meeting on September 10th at 6:15, and let's get these suspension rates down, let's invoke these interventions, these resources, and the support we need for these African-American students to be successful here in the Rialto Unified School District. Thank you for having me. Thank you for having us, and we look forward to a successful partnership with Rialto Unified.
Ms. Parker?
What does DAYPAC stand for?
DAYPAC is District African-American Parent Advisory Council. We are consist, we consist of representatives of APACs from the school, from the school sites, and our community, and parents within the Rialto district and city. So, come out, join us, be a part of this body because we need you.
Thank you.
And I just did want to comment, Ms. Parker. Some meetings ago, various meetings ago, you don't have to come up, it's just a comment.
She's trying to get her six minutes.
You can. No, you can, you can say it. We do, I don't know if anybody from DAYPAC, I know DAYPAC has advocated in the past for ethnic studies for students here in the district. The district with the leadership of our superintendent and the approval of this board, we have began an ethnic studies program, so I know DAYPAC was interested in that, and anything you guys can offer to help them develop and make sure that we've got a good African-American studies component in the ethnic studies program would be greatly appreciated. So, if nobody from DAYPAC has participated currently, let's make sure to get somebody on that team and make sure there's a good African-American studies component to that.
I totally concur, and so we will most definitely be looking forward to a contact person because that is some information that we do not have, and I will most definitely be looking forward to speaking to someone, and we will most definitely be there, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we go to comments from association executive board members, and we'll begin with Rialto Education Association.
Thank you. Good evening, board, superintendent, viewing audience. My name is Lisa Lindberg. I'm the president of the Rialto Education Association. I'm glad there's all this talk of equity this evening because it's perfect for what I want to talk about. I have two requests for you this evening. One, I want you to know that we are sending two of our REA members to the LGBTQ conference this fall. One middle school teacher and one high school teacher has asked to attend the LGBTQ conference, which stands for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer. Our members want to go to the conference to better understand and be supportive of our LGBTQ students and families. REA will be paying for the conference registration, the lodging and mileage, and we are asking if the district could pay for the substitutes for one day for those teachers. The conference starts Friday, October 11th, and ends on Sunday, October 13th. My second request is to ask this board to please be inclusive of our LGBTQ students and families by commemorating either a Pride Month, or Harvey Milk Day, or something similar during the discussion and action items on the board agenda this school year. The last time such a commemoration came up was seven years ago when the board was asked to commemorate Harvey Milk Day. It was shot down by a tie vote as one board member was absent that particular night. Nothing similar has come up since. I remember, Mr. Montes, you spoke very passionately in support of that commemoration that evening, and I appreciate that, and the need to be inclusive. It is well past time for our district to do just that, so I'm asking you to please vote yes on such commemorations, and if you do not see one on the agenda this year, to ask why it is not there. We have commemorations for Black History Month, Hispanic Heritage Month, Cesar Chavez, Martin Luther King, and we have even commemorated National School Lunch Week. So, I am asking to please be mindful of all our students and their families, especially our marginalized communities in our district. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we go to Communication Workers of America. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. California School Employees Association. Ladies first? Is it, they have a female representative?
They do.
Okay, it's okay, I'm sorry. Well, however you guys want to do it.
Good evening, Rialto family. I'm Chris Cordasco. I'm Chapter 203 President. I have two items that I want to speak about tonight that actually are on the board agenda. First is item H16, the transportation piece. Of course, it is always concerning to the bargaining unit when we see bargaining unit work being contracted out. I want to say that I thank Derek Harris for being transparent and forthcoming with the information as to why, and I acknowledge that the district has worked diligently to decrease the amount of contracting we're doing in the Transportation Department. But I am watching, and I hope that continues. The second item is H22. This is the Classification and Compensation Study piece. It is disappointing that we missed our deadline. I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't stand here and tell you that. I understand it is a big task. I just can't help but wonder if we had started promptly in October when the agreement was reached with the district, would we not be in this situation? Something to consider. So, that's all I have for tonight. Thank you very much. See you at the next one.
Now, we go to CWA, Communication Workers of America. Okay. Rialto School Managers Association. Going once, going twice? That brings us to item four, comments from the superintendent.
Thank you, President Montes. As all of you understand, we know that our purpose as a district is to serve the needs of students. Part of that you saw tonight in the presentation on bullying. But in order to address the needs of students, we must also work and serve the needs of our adults, whether it's staff, parents, members of the community. And so, part of my comments today will focus on adults, and the other part will loop back to the comments that I made at our previous board meeting. And so, today, I want to begin first by congratulating the new appointees to the new positions that they will be taking starting tomorrow, and for them to also understand that with the new appointments come new responsibilities. I also want to just point out a number of events that I have visited that have focused on adults, starting with our open house for our parent center and the number of parents that managed to be a part of that event a week or so ago, and the service-oriented attitude throughout the room among all the parents who were there just willing to serve in some capacity or another the needs of our district. But really, what stood out was the excitement and the optimism that I felt, that I heard, that I saw among the parents, among the adults. I also attended a 66ers game at San Manuel Stadium last week. I was invited by the Kiwanis Club of Greater San Bernardino a month or so ago, and so I made good on my promise. I was accompanied by my wife. And again, being around adults who were very service-oriented fundraising, it was a fundraising event, fundraising for eventually the needs of kids. And again, with them, I saw the level of excitement and kindness, the words, the conversations that I was a part of that focus exclusively on being kind and serving others. And this morning, I had the opportunity to visit our adult school and visited a number of classrooms, and again, seeing the level of excitement and optimism in the voices of the adults that I had conversations with, the reminder of how many of them reminded me of my mother when she took adult classes when I was in first, second grade, and I too attended those night classes back then with her for me to have a second opportunity to learn English. But looking at 30, 40, 50-year-olds, so excited to learn how to convert Celsius temperature to Fahrenheit and vice versa, and how they're picking up math skills where they believe they can at least understand what their kids are challenged with and to be able to provide some guidance. And when I asked them if, what they would do if they had the magic power to turn back the clock and become 20 years old again, what happened to those dreams when they were 20 years old? Do they still have them? And really challenged them to continue working towards those dreams because it's never too late to obtain that degree, that college degree, the college education, or to become that business owner, or whatever it is that was their dream that is still realizable today. And the tears that began to fall from some of their eyes just knowing that they were still working very hard to, at some point, realize that dream that they had when they were 18 or 20 years old was very moving. So, I got a chance to visit our English conversation class where the students are not allowed to speak Spanish, and they're, I won't say forced, but the expectation is that every conversation they have in there is in English, and the teacher was demanding that expectation of them, and the adults were sticking to it, challenging each other even if they struggled with some of the words, some of the pronunciations, they would make in every effort to engage their entire conversation in English. And then I visited the class that's taking the GED in Spanish, and again, the amount of gratefulness for the opportunity to be able to complete their studies. At our last meeting, we had comments made about there being a wait list, waiting list of families or parents who want to take GED courses in Spanish, and so, we were able to open up a second section. So, now we have everyone who was on that initial waiting list enrolled in the second section of GED. But again, in part, it was realized because the parents requested it, because the parents insisted on it, because the parents demanded it. And again, these are adults that are doing what they can to further their education so that they can be a greater resource to their kids and to contribute in a different way to this community. So, that was the focus on the adults. And so, speaking of parents, I do know that we have a number of parents in our community and our district who advocate regularly for kids or just simply for the district to improve conditions that will make a difference in the lives of kids or in the working conditions for the adults who work with kids. So, I want to continue to encourage the parents to advocate because together we'll be able to make a difference, as some of them have spoken previously. It's not easy to be everywhere all the time, and so there'll be gaps in the way that we monitor the expectations, and even with the adults, we know that not, that not every adult brings their A-game every day. And so, it takes sometimes items or issues bringing, being brought to our attention in order for the district to be able to respond. And so, I do thank the staff today for addressing five or six issues that came to our attention here at the district office today, and we were able to address them. But it shouldn't, they shouldn't be addressed simply because of the prospect of the issue coming before the board. It should be addressed because it's the right thing to do, and it should be even prevented if at all possible. I have learned that oftentimes we sort of create our own fires, and then here we are running to put out fires. Well, don't create the fires by doing the right thing to begin with. And now, I loop back at some of the comments I made last week related to our focus for this year. I was able to release a video to the staff, thanks to our Communication Department, Ricardo Carlos in particular, putting quite a bit of time to make that video possible. And so, just as a reminder, we'll continue and to work very hard in the area of math, reading, and literacy, our services for African-American students, students with special needs, English learners, and once again, our efforts to, as you saw today in our bullying initiative, really to improve the service of PBIS that we offer here in the district. And there's some data, some information that's embargoed, so it's not supposed to be shared. And you know that with PBIS, there are recognitions by the state that honor those schools that have made progress up to a certain level in the implementation of PBIS. And now, we have 28, our 28 schools, we have 29, but Zupanic does not participate because it's home study. So, we have the 28 schools participating in PBIS, and for the first time this year, we have schools that have qualified for gold. And so, we'll be announcing, we'll be announcing those names formally once the names are released by the state. And I want to loop back to kindness. Last week, I kind of paraphrased the definition that we're working here in Rialto of what kindness really is, and so we have the final draft that was included in the video that we sent. I just wanted to take a quick moment to read the final draft once again so that you can see the expectation that comes with our initiative to promote kindness in our district and our community. And so, kindness in its fullest expression exists when its two elements, empathy and personal honor, become one. Empathy means having the capacity to understand or feel what another person is experiencing. It is exemplified by being good, helpful, and considerate towards others. Essentially, it means being a nice and caring person. Personal honor is to have self-discipline and respect for one's conduct. It is exemplified by being punctual and having presence and commendable work ethic. For educators, honor is exercising one's full powers to create conditions that generate new opportunities. It means being at work and on time every day while having agency to create policies, formations, or lessons that will have tremendous and lasting impact on others. formations, or lessons that will have tremendous and lasting impact on others, especially students. In short, it means being nice, working hard, and being different. That's the Rialto way towards kindness. And speaking of kindness, during National Night Out and last week, we announced the winner of the grand prize selected from a basket of tickets for those who stopped by our booth. And tonight, we have our winner here to pick up the prize. We have our very own Deidra Proctor here to collect on the $3,000 Bradford Renaissance Portraits Gift Certificate for her to get her hair done and be able to take advantage of this amazing work along with a pin from our district. So for you.
Do you want my husband up here too? Yeah, because we came together. We would have brought our lunch van, but she would have screamed through the whole thing. She needs to know, not yet, not yet, not yet. Yeah, totally. Appreciate you guys and all you do.
And that is all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Avila. Next, we go to comments from members of the Board of Education and we'll begin with our student board member.
Thank you. I would first like to just say that, you know, it's been a good three weeks of school, first three weeks of school. Not a lot has happened and I look forward to, you know, getting, getting started, you know? So I look forward to meeting with the DSAC students and to hear what they have to say and just to, you know, just start rolling. I would just like to, you know, shout out to my football team. We won our first game. We're the only high school to win our first game. Even though I represent all the schools, you know, shout out to mine. And I would just like to thank you guys again, you know, for giving me this opportunity. You know, second board meeting, still getting the hang of things. And I'd just like to thank you for the help that I've gotten from everyone along the way. And all our high schools have back-to-school night tomorrow, so I'll be at Carter. So if anyone, you know, wants to come out and just recognize our schools, just see you come out tomorrow. And thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. And for those who didn't get his name, his name is Aviance Douglas. Next, we go to our very own Mr. Joe Ayala.
Thank you, President Montez. Tonight, I want to use my minutes and discuss our kids and share some viewpoints. I know you've heard before the term, the three Rs. And can't argue that they're not important, but, you know, when you are talking about raising children and guiding them, a good comprehensive high school, good comprehensive school district would look for more to, to, to help our kids. Children need encouragement, okay? More than they need criticism, just as we all do. And it's easy to, to be yelling at them, but again, it's, you know, it's written that they need encouragement. So however you can do that, that's probably moving in the right direction. Kids, when they are interested in something, okay, they need, they're curious. They, they need our support. Sometimes parents, though, look at it maybe sometimes favorably and sometimes not so favorably. If your kid wants to play football, maybe you could say it's a chip off the old block, you know, and be proud. But what if he wants to play Jax? Some of you don't know what Jax is. Well, I remember as a little boy, it's a little rubber ball and you have these little metal things and you throw the ball up and you pick them up. You know, I, I used to play Jax. And I played baseball and I played other sports. And through my life, it wasn't the game, it wasn't the activity that was important. It was the people that I shared the activity with. So, you know, as a parent, you know, if your child wants to do ballet, dancing, let them, you know? Because remember, it's not the activity, it's the people that they're going to meet. They're going to develop relationships. That's what's important. So when our kids show interest, support them, support them. They need to play, they need to play. Playing is not really indoors. It's not watching TV, it's not on the computer. They need to go outside and express themselves. They need to be part of a group, activity of some kind. That breeds social intelligence. This is not part of the three Rs, see? These are extracurricular activities and it doesn't have to be at the school, it can be at home in the backyard with the neighbors. Kids need to understand that it's important to share, doing something for someone else. Because if they don't do that, they're going to miss another part of their life that builds self-esteem. You want to feel good? Share a glass of water with somebody who can't reach it. It's that simple. But share. You will feel better, you'll develop a child that's much more well-rounded. Pride, sometimes people don't understand pride. You know, it gets in our way sometimes, yes. You can be stubborn, that's not what I'm talking about. But pride will keep that child sometimes on the right path. It'll keep them from harmful temptations because they have pride. They're not going to let you down, they're not going to let the team down, they're going to hold themselves high. We're all vulnerable, but have some pride, encourage it in your children. You know, everybody needs to be optimistic, they need to be encouraged, such as, it's going to be okay, it's okay to make a mistake. Because all of us feel tension, anxiety, sometimes we're not comfortable with what it is that we have to do. But in the real world, there's a lot of things that are going to make us feel uncomfortable. And if they're not used to doing that, then they're going to be short-changed, they're going to have to take risk, they're going to have to invest. So encourage it, be optimistic with your children. At the end of the day, all these things we talked about, one of the most important things is to listen to your child intently. Look them in the eyes and really listen to them, not talk to them, listen to them. A great way to do this is just serve a nice dinner, say, we're having dinner on Thursdays at seven o'clock, everybody shows up, we're going to talk. And then, once they get comfortable, positive things develop, maybe go to the movies, who knows? But it's important to listen. Okay, in summary, we need to make this a priority, not when they're in high school. When they're in the sandbox, that's when we start teaching these values. Yes, along with the three Rs. That's what a comprehensive educational experience is all about. Thank you so much for an opportunity to share just some points to help our parents and our teachers, to help our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ayala. Next, we go to board member, Mr. Joseph Martinez.
Thank you, President Montez. Congratulations to tonight's promotions and welcome to all the new hires. Thank you to my current staff family for the past year, for the past decade. Can't imagine that I've been here 11 years. I plan on another 25 more, by the way. And for all the new hires, all the new faces we're going to, we've seen and will continue seeing, welcome and specifically welcome to all those faces, to the educational family here in Rialto. I want you to know that myself and this board are trying to do our best, as long as the state, federal governments give us our, our fair share, our fair share of funding, we want to make sure that things are secure for you. I want to make sure that you've, that you've got good medical insurance, I want to make sure that you do that. All I ask, all this board asks, is that you take care of the kids for us. You're on the front line. We want to do our best for you by covering you with our umbrella, so to speak. As long as you're doing that, we can, we can care for you because that's what I want to do, that's what's in my heart. I can't care for my 25,000 educational grandkids, but with your help, I can. Okay, what happens if you go outside of the umbrella? What's the definition of that? For me, the worst thing would be being retired at work. And we have a few still. So this is just an alert to those. All of us have to be accountable. In 2020, I'm going to be accountable to the voters. So I say, all of us have to be accountable. Dr. Avila's under review right now for his raises and being here longer because he's done such a wonderful job. Part of that wonderful job, part of that wonderful job is not just the leadership skills he has in bringing people together, but in early discussions with him, if we were going to change a culture of education here in Rialto and care for the community, it really meant we had to care for the whole child. And, oh, it's probably been four or five years that the Parent Leadership Institute was started. That means the parents know what to look for to help the child. That, that changes the dynamic, that changes everything because all of a sudden, the parents understand what is expected of their child, how they can help their child and the school district. PTA is a great way, by the way. And I can't wait to see what's coming up in the next 25 years. If you want information on the Parent Leadership Institute, I think it's still going on strong and will be even stronger at the Chavez Huerta Center for Education, gearing up for those changes. I look forward to seeing some major positive things there. We are in a catch-up year, if I will, for those who did not take the SERP, who really didn't feel comfortable with technology, and I'm talking the adults, not the children, they're all comfortable with that. So we need to be as comfortable with it so we can teach the next grade and the next generation. So I'm glad to hear that we have some, some office space. Ms. Brown, thank you. It's down there in your area. There's brand-new technology down there. So if you're not comfortable with it, you have an opportunity to get down there. Teacher, classified, doesn't matter, it's education. And, and to tie things up, what I really wanted to start with this morning, it was just this little bit. When I started 10 years ago, we were 40 years behind in our technology. Imagine that. The network was slow, still slow, but it's as fast as we can afford. And this year, thanks to Ms. Scantleberry and company, it's always the group, not just the, the face of the group. She's getting us more for the same amount of money as last year. So that's a big deal. Technology's getting cheaper. But as of this year, and I saw it in Dr. Avila's welcome message, and I loved it, I absolutely loved the information, that we are on the cutting edge, and we are. That doesn't mean next year, that same technology will be the cutting edge. So please, adults, take advantage of the learning opportunities. We have to model that to our students. The future vision, it's, it's pretty intense. So I'll, I'll turn it over to the president and I will share that in a future board meeting. Thank you for everything you do for my kids.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Next, we go to our very own board clerk, Ms. Dina Walker.
I'd just like to say congratulations to our new people with all the new appointments today. Where is, is Ms. Ruth, is Marissa still here? Nope? Okay. And then hopefully that, folks, if you have an opportunity to support the PTA with the fundraiser for the scholarships, especially because there's an opportunity to give to scholarships for our kids who are always overlooked, and that's going to be at our Myler School. So definitely do that piece. And then lastly, tomorrow is back-to-school night for high schools. And oftentimes, folks go to the elementary schools and the middle school, back-to-school night, and the poor high schools get the least amount of parents on back-to-school night, go out, show up. I plan to try to, I've got an event tomorrow night too, but I'm going to try to show up to at least one or two high schools tomorrow night. So I hope I see you there. Thank you.
Always short and sweet. Next, we go to our very own board vice president, Mrs. Nancy O'Kelly.
Well, welcome and thank you all for joining us tonight. I had a couple of things I wanted to bring up. One was to congratulate everyone who was appointed tonight. That's exciting, you're going to be starting a new job and probably not know what the heck you're doing, but you will figure it out, trust me. I also wanted to bring up, in relation to what was brought up earlier tonight, I was a former math teacher. And I, I really have mixed feelings about this extra year of math because I know that the more math students can take, the better it is for them. Math is like the number-one course for developing logical thought and being able to problem-solve. So the more they take, the better off they will be. But I also know, after teaching it for years and years, that there are many people that would find that extremely challenging and I would hate to see it stop them from graduating. So it's kind of a, a double-edged sword and not sure quite what's going to happen there. I guess we'll have to see the first year they do it and what the outcomes are and, and reevaluate. But it is, it is a very real question. There is a innate mathematical ability in a lot of people and an innate mathematical inability in a lot of people. So it is definitely something to think about. I love our theme of kindness this year and mainly because in today's world, there's too little kindness. And imagine what the world would be like if everybody showed a little more kindness to everybody else. Well, I happened to come across this poem, very short, but I thought- Well, I happened to come across this poem, very short, but I thought it kind of summed it all up, and it was very sweet. And it's by Anonymous. Nobody knows who wrote it. But, "Kind hearts are the gardens, kind thoughts are the roots, kind words are the blossoms, kind deeds are the fruits. Love is the sweet sunshine that warms into life, for only in darkness grow hatred and strife." I thought that was short, but sweet, but was a very good definition of kindness. So, thank you and have a nice night.
Thank you, Ms. O'Kelly. That brings me to me. And I just, also just want to congratulate all of the new appointments today. We look forward to all of the great work that is ahead of, ahead of them. I did just want to make a correction. We don't have 29 schools. We actually have 31 schools. If we count adult ed over at the Dolores Huerta-Sister Chavez Center for Education, which is an awesome program, by the way, and they're doing a lot of good things over there. And then, and then, if we count preschool, for those who don't know, we have 16 state-sponsored preschool sites and six RUSD-sponsored sites, meaning that with the leadership of the superintendent and his leadership team and with the board's approval, we've been funding, out of the district's pocket, six sites for preschool, much-needed preschool. And hopefully, we can get, you know, funding for even more. So with the 16 preschool sites and the adult program, it's actually 31 schools. So we shouldn't leave adult education and preschool out of the picture, so we need to really start drilling the fact that we have 31 schools, at least 31.
Certain Leadership Institute, 32.
Well, why not? Let's count the parent center, too. So I just wanted to give kudos to adult, our adult school program and our preschool program because we know that a lot of times, often, they're not included in the count, but they're definitely valued and we do appreciate all of the hard work that they do. Aviance Douglas, you're doing an awesome job, you know, you look sharp and you always, you're coming in ready, so keep up the good work. We know you're going to be a good representative for your student peers. And then with that, I do just want to encourage also everyone to participate in all of the fundraisers for scholarships. And, Mr. Rial, did you want to say something?
Yes, I'll wait till you get done.
Oh, go ahead.
Normally, I don't interject because I already gave my spiel. However, this particular night, the comment I heard from Ms. O'Kelly about the math requirement, whoa, that's a big one with me. That's a big one with me. And I just have to share with you that I taught math also 14 years, by default. I still have nightmares, and I was the math teacher. Okay? And I can still remember teaching linear equations, quadratics, graphing, and it was just, wow. In my family, we didn't, we didn't focus in those areas. There is a solution. You want to be a doctor? That's an option. You want to be a lawyer? That's an option. You want to be a math major? That's an option. But to make it a requirement, in my opinion, it's a crime. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just quickly on that, as we know that our state legislators often propose legislation without really considering the impact on local communities and the impact that something like this will have on our budgets and the options that kids will have at the high schools, especially. I know we have some options in Dr. De Souza related to this fourth year of math. I'm going to ask to just give us a little bit of detail on what we're doing currently as a district.
You want to take some of my time, too? So go ahead, go ahead. Just kidding, just kidding, go ahead. Just kidding, go ahead.
Good evening, board members, Superintendent Avila. Just to address, our schools have been really proactive and actually have had the fourth year of math at least. I'd say about 80 to 85% of students are taking a fourth year of math right now. So we have various offerings for the fourth year of math. We have, from the Cal State system, it's called Math Reasoning with Connections, which was actually developed for students to actually look at problems conceptually and to get deep reasoning with mathematics. There is also college readiness math that we, college math that we put in some years ago. We also put in where kids' interests are there, and so we actually have a sports statistics class that has been at our high schools for a few years. So our schools want to do that fourth year of math in terms, they know that students will suffer if they don't have math in their senior year when they go to college. And actually, the Cal State system is creating two different types of majors, students who are going to take majors which have, require math, and students which are majors with liberal arts. So they're also looking at that system, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't got much to say, so go ahead, everybody, go ahead.
I just want to say, I wasn't going to say anything because, you know, this is my, my thing, right? And we've talked about it, I shared it with our board a month or two ago, when everything is coming down and the state advocacy around it. And just to say, you know, really, it's changed a lot from it. The initial iteration from Cal State was fourth year of math, no matter what, the fourth year, even if you went calculus trig, you got the highest level of math, you still had to take a fourth year, even if you had done everything, they still wanted you to take some kind of math. And with the advocacy from, with the lead from Ed Trust West, Campaign for College Opportunity, as well as other local organizations organizing across the state, it's actually changed significantly from the initial proposal. And so now it's just take four years of math anytime in high school, you know, but it has to be a certain type of math, right? They're calling it quantitative rate. So it went from math in particular to quantitative reasoning. Our pushback right now is just really about the fact that do the school districts have capacity? And as Dr. Avila said, oftentimes, our legislator, legislature, legislature makes decisions about things that impact other folk who have not, no, didn't have a part in the decision. And our biggest issue, and I'm saying "are" because I'm one of those people who are advocating across, with our partners across the state, but the, the big thing is, when we look at the data, regardless, we may have the offerings, kids may have an opportunity to take that fourth year of class, but if everybody needs to take that fourth year of this math class to get into our public institution, Cal State, which actually, actually admits most of the students who go into higher ed in California, then we've got a problem because we do not have the capacity. And in four years, we will not have that capacity. And so if our legislature who are, I mean, excuse me, it's not even a legislator at this point, if Cal State, if the system, if their board of trustees does not work hand-in-hand with our California legislature to say, if we're going to implement this, how do we then work with K-12 partners to make sure there's capacity in K-12 so that this actually is doable and it can happen? So we're saying, stop it right now. The special hearing is tomorrow in Long Beach from 10 to 1 o'clock. It's just for that particular topic. We're saying, push back the proposal until more data and research has been met. And then also, a solution to this is because we want more rigor. Yes, we want young people to be rigorous. We want them to have that. We know that it helps with their thinking and processing and so on and so forth. But we want to say, offer a solution to where it works so that it supports a K-12 system so that they can actually support and make this happen. And then also, so that it's equitable and so that we look at that piece and it supports the teachers that need to teach these courses. Because just because you add a course and you put people in it, doesn't mean they're successful and the outcome that you're intending still happens. So our teachers still need to be supported in this. So we're just asking if the alternatives are, what are we going to do? Yes, it can happen. It should not happen this year, it's been voted on this year, but then to work hand-in-hand with K-12 systems so that resources, human and financial resources are placed with K-12 to really make it happen and doable. But we want our kids to have this additional support in math. We want them to have that. But this particular proposal does not address that and is inequitable across all schools and especially districts like ours. So that's my, that was my three minutes.
President Montez, ma'am?
Of course.
Seems how you're reading.
No problem.
You've had the longest time.
Happy birthday to me.
How come you're taking so long?
I'm just kidding, go ahead, no, go ahead. No, no, it's all good.
If I understand correctly, we have had four years of math requirement as of a couple of years ago, when grad requirements got changed. But the legislature allowed the fourth year to be computer science.
Right.
And that's why I supported it. And Brenda Parker, a computer teacher and adult ed, is going, yeah.
You know, and the, and the truth of the matter is, is that it's no surprise to communities that are struggling financially, it's no surprise to communities that are disadvantaged in many ways when it comes to college acceptance and college-going rates, that it seems like there's a trend, there's been a trend, unfortunately, in our country that it's just getting harder and harder, people are making it harder and harder for, for people of color and people of disadvantaged communities to get into college. And what the, what the, the cost of college nowadays compared to what it was 30, 40 years ago, student debt through the roof and then for the, for the college, for the CSU to require, make requirements to make it even harder for, for students to get into college, it doesn't, it just doesn't sit well with, with many people. So I do hope, and I completely understand the other flip side of it, that we want to make sure our students are prepared and we want to make sure that they're, they're well, they're well-trained in all areas, not just math. But the last thing we want to do is make it harder for them to go to college. So thank you for everybody's two cents on that. And with that, let's go ahead and get this show on the road. Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you. We go to item D, public hearing, public information. This Williams Inspection Report, fourth quarterly report, reference D 1.1 in the back of the agenda. And that's just information, public information. We go to consent calendar items. All items on the consent counter will be acted upon in one motion unless pulled from the Board of Education members or the superintendent for individual action. And can we get a motion to approve reference E through J?
So moved.
Second.
Can we get a second? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Martinez, and thank you, Mrs. Walker, Ms. Walker and Ms., Mrs. O'Kelly, you have a pull?
I have a few, three of them have the, the same thing I want to talk about, but H4, H6, H10.
Wait, 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 hold on. H4, H6?
H10.
H10.
And H23.
H23. Okay, why don't we start with H4?
Do you want to approve all the other ones first?
Yeah, let's do that. Let's approve all, all items. Can I get a motion to approve all items, reference E through J, with the exception of H4, H6, H10, and H23?
So moved.
Second.
All in, preferential vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And now that, that takes us to H4.
Okay, H4, H6, and H10. I have a beef with, and I brought this up years ago on the board, when they put down for the fiscal impact, they use the term "general fund," okay? And then I was told sometimes it's site general fund, sometimes it's general. When I think of general fund, I think of the district's general fund. So without that, I want that word "site" there so I know where the money is coming from. We're expected to approve it, and basically, I have no idea where the money is coming from. So on those three, where is the money coming from?
Their school-side operating budget, so their site fund.
You're sure?
I'm positive.
One of them's like $32,000. Somebody's spending that out of their site money?
Well, we've got, we've got, regarding item H4, we've got the principal here, maybe he would like some, give some clarification.
Hi, my name is Alex Faro, principal at Morgan Elementary School, and the, it's a Gardner-Holt, and it's out of Title I.
Oh, you're, you're good then. Okay, thank you.
Regarding H6, Mr. Islam, or anybody, please, regarding H6, the cost of the item for the Parent Institute for Quality Education, also known as PK, of a cost of $10,000, is going to be paid from the general fund or is there a separate fund?
It's, it's a general fund, but again, is it the site allocation, the fund coming from the school?
From the parent center?
Yes.
No.
From Rialto High School.
That's the word I need to see there that helps me to understand.
And it's also Title I?
Probably.
Most likely?
I'm not sure it's a Title I.
Is Carol around?
It should be Title I. Because with parents, I mean, that's fine. All right, I'm just, I'm just, the term "general fund," in my opinion, belongs to the general fund of the district. And if it's coming from a school site out of their general fund, we need to preface it with the word "site general fund." Then we know where the money's coming from. Okay, well, we've answered that question, but it's the same thing on number 10.
10 is from COB, regarding COB?
Young Women's Empowerment Foundation. Anybody know where that's coming from?
I'm guessing it's going to be also from the site, probably Title I funding?
All right, now on number 23, I have the same concern because the term "general fund" was used.
We have the speaker.
I know.
Okay.
And the description was very vague. How and when will the character development be disseminated? How many days of coaching? How many days of monitoring? Who will provide the social-emotional learning activities? And I just want to add, when I don't understand the name of an organization, I look it up. I looked up UK International, and it referred to a soccer organization. But under that, I found nothing about character education. So where did this organization come from?
So I'm going to talk about the funds, and it's out of our Title I funds, and then Robert's going to go ahead and talk about the, the character education piece and where, how the program began.
Just for, just for clarification, could you please introduce yourself?
Well, if it's out of Title I, why wasn't Title I in the write-up as opposed to general fund?
Because they, they, every board item that comes from the school site, they're making, they said that the county has structured a new process and that we need to be, that they need to see it labeled as a general fund account even though it's Title I. That's what we were told. So anything that goes to the board and even though it's out of Title I funds, has to go under the general fund item.
Well, that doesn't make any sense.
At all.
So somewhere in the write-up, if that is truly the case, which I disagree with the county, then Title, it has to be in the write-up that Title I funds are going to be used, even if you supposedly have to put "general fund" down below.
Well, you can, there's nothing wrong with "general fund" being on it, it just, for clarification.
Because there's restricted and unrestricted. And by the time it gets to Mohammed's desk, we're in trouble.
Yeah, but as long as they specify, what I'm saying, as long as more information is specified.
So if Mohammed can provide some clarity on this?
Yes, in theory, Title I, all of the, you know, it's fallen under called "general fund." I hear you, board, you need more clarity on the item saying, because it's a general fund, then you can say "site Title I fund." So they're part of the general fund, even if they're restricted.
Subcategory.
So in a broad picture, it is a general fund. So when you report all this to the systems, we report as general fund.
Then just put at least "site general fund."
Yes, we can do that. Board, we can do that.
Now, about my other concerns with this item, I also do not like vague descriptions. I like to see how many students are going to be served. I like to see how many students are going to be serviced, how many days of coaching there's going to be, how many days of monitoring, blah, 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 I mean, what are we paying for? And that was not in it.
All right, so, what's, what's great about this program is that all students are going to be able to participate, and they're gonna, what they do is they set up a character education program, where coaches come on campus, and they work with the students during recess, and, um, all students get to participate, and, um, as well as, they come on, and they, um, build relationships with the students into the classrooms, and they follow what our character education programs, um, uh, were implementing through our Tier I interventions.
Well, how many people are helping the kids, and does it have anything to do with the soccer organization?
Yes, it, it, so, the UK Soccer Organization started back in the early eighties, and, um, they've been doing a structured character education program through their, um, camping programs that they have, so, they branched off to create an edu-, uh, a character education program.
How come I couldn't find anything about that?
Because they're, they're, it's, it's a brand-new program, and they piloted at several of our schools. I was one of the schools where they piloted for a whole month, and they've also piloted this program in, in, um, Redlands and in schools in Santa, uh, Santa Ana School District.
So they use soccer as part of the-
They use soccer, yes, but, uh, yes, they use soccer as part of the character education program, where they teach them sportmanship, um, and other, um, and then, so then now, um, Roberto's gonna give you, uh, a snapshot of what the program involves.
Okay.
Uh, good evening, Board members, I'm Roberto Velez, I'm the principal of KC Elementary.
Uh-huh.
So it's the first time I, um, I speak at the Board, so I'm-
Welcome.
Well, welcome.
Welcome, I'm excited. So, as, as part of our, uh, continuous improvement at our, at our sites, um, and we're always trying to make our sites better for our kids, the idea is that we'll be providing an absolute, uh, high-quality education, so part of that, obviously, is to make sure that our school culture, our student culture, is always being looked at. That's, that's a key component, and we're always revamping and revising and looking at that, so, it just happened to be that, one of the things that we had been talking with our teachers is, how can we make the environment of our students beyond the classroom safe? And so, we were looking at a program or support, really, that would be embedded in our current multi-tier support systems. So this just happened to be a key tool, that was going to be rightly, it'll fit right into our current multi-tier support system. And so, um, partnering up with, uh, Mr. Faro there at Morgan, we, we kind of saw that, and some of our teachers said like, hey, this is, this is a good idea, let's, let's see if it's going to work with our site, so, looking at data, talking with teachers, seeing our, our own individual site needs, we, we realized that this was going to be just a good fit, so, as a tool, um, we, we're going to be using this, and UK International just happens to have a foundation in soccer, because those coaches get, um, so a lot of them are, are, are soccer players, but it goes much more beyond than just soccer, and that's kind of like the foundation, and so what ends up happening is that they provide a, 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 a comprehensive program that addresses, um, a, a, a complete school, uh, culture need. Um, they're going to be looking at character education development, uh, this is going to be done with our students and our staff, so they're teaching them these skills to be able to, um, engage socially in the proper way, because ultimately, the goal is to make sure that our kids have the right skills for the real world. And so they're teaching them these skills during this program that's structured with them, not only that, but one of the things that, there's an on-campus coach that works, um, in collaboration and partnership with our new nades. So our new nades are out there supervising our students, are going to be working with the coach to provide this new, uh, safe and supportive, uh, ambience, but it's also connected, um, to our character trait assemblies. And so, they actually partner up with our, um, strategists and our AP, and that group that provides, uh, our PBIS Tier I supports, to create and, um, uh, conduct assemblies for our students that are, that's trying to carry out this message across, of, of character counts in our site. And then also, it's addressing social-emotional, uh, learning through these activities that are going to promote what we're looking for, am I taking too long? Oh, I'm sorry. I just, I'm just gonna add this, also that, um, it, it's, it's absolutely infused to what we're doing in our current site, and it's a tool. It's just one added thing that's going to make our student culture much, much more positive, so I just wanted to-
Okay. All right, well, thank you.
There's one image that sort of sold me on this, because it did come to Cabinet a while back, and we sent it back because we too had questions.
Mm-hmm.
But the one image, if you can just imagine an aerial view, and this is what was provided, of a school, and it looks like a multi-sports, uh, complex, where during recess, you see structured activities throughout campus, and not just kids kind of running around, chasing each other, or kids sitting by themselves because they have no one to play with, every student during the activities is engaged.
Wow.
And that's a way to really reach out to those kids that are just kind of detached, uh, and this is a way to engage them in something very constructive, so that's the one image that I saw this, that made me think, wow, this could actually work, especially for those kids who don't have a, a voice or the initiative to seek out friendships.
Well, if it works at your guys' schools, take notes, and maybe you guys can help us spread it to the other schools, in-house.
Definitely.
Thank you, thank you.
Now we can approve all the ones that I put-
If there's no more questions and comments, uh, can I get a motion to approve item H4, H6, H10, and H23?
So moved.
Second.
Preferential vote by student board member?
Aye.
Vote by board members?
Aye.
All right.
That brings us to K, discussion action items. Uh, number one is approve an agreement with Clay Counseling Solutions, successfully motivating African-American resiliency and training program, also known as SMART, to provide services to all five middle schools and three comprehensive high schools effective August 29th, 2019, through June 30th, 2020, at a cost of one hundred and ninety thousand, to be paid from the general fund. And there's a reference K 1.1 through 2, in the back of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
I have a question.
I'll second it, and, uh, that brings us to questions or comments.
All right, again, in the write-up, it was vague, didn't talk about the number of counselors that will be provided, how many students will meet with each one, how many meetings will they have with each student, I mean, what are the details? This is a lot of money, so, I want to be sure I know what we're getting.
And you sure should be certain what you're getting for the money that you're spending. So again, I'm Angela Brantley, Lead Student Services Agent, and, um, the SMART program is a collaboration of several vendors, and we actually have representation here tonight. Um, you, we worked with them last year, reminding, um, our community that our African-American students, um, continue to be disproportionately suspended, um, disproportionately, um, not meeting the CAS scores for ELA in math, and so, um, we wanted to find a collaborative way to support them, and so what we have is Clay Counseling, which supports with, um, community, um, circles for all African-American students, so, your first question is, every single African-American student at those eight schools will start with initial community building circles. We did those last year, they were very effective. When we have those circles, the principals are present, uh, myself, Ms. Teresa Brown, other, um, administrators are present for our students to know that we're here to support them and improve their outcomes. From that, what they learn is that there are other services that will be provided, so those services include, um, mentorship through, um, Young Visionaries Collaborative, um, emerging beauty for our young ladies in terms of self-esteem and confidence, uh, we have, uh, counseling in terms of academic and, um, Youth Action Project is one of those organizations that provide like academic counseling and tutoring at the high school level and middle school level, and then we also have, um, college access supports, so there's variety, so during those, uh, large group sessions, the students understand what other services that they can access, and so either students self-select to participate, or counselors, or teachers can service, but there's no limit in the number of students. What we tend to have is about, um, twenty students at a time may participate for a period with the Young Visionaries, and then we'll get another group, so, um, the max would be three hundred for individual counseling, that's, and I think that's in there, right, the three hundred?
Yeah.
Um, so, all kids are going to be connected with at the beginning, and then, depending on what their needs are, if it's tutoring, if it's college access, if it's, um, self-esteem issues, if it's mentorship, it just depends on what those kids need, we plug them into those services.
Do we have any kind of data? I know we've been using Clay Counseling, but to show that the things they do are improving things for African-American students?
Right, so we, um, submitted, I think about a couple weeks ago, at least a two-sheet or just something that was condensed, because we have quite a bit of data, in terms of the number of kids who are receiving, um, the services, and the number of kids who are improving academically, or at least even survey data that we're getting from the kids and from, um, the staff at the school. I don't know if we were able to get that to the Board, I do have an, I just-
I don't have it.
I have one copy, do you mind if I? So it shows the number of students who have been serviced and some of that, um, survey data that we received. We have a lot of work to do when it comes to the outcomes in terms of the academic and term-
Right.
-ELA and math and those, and we just believe that by starting with our organization and collaborating with our departments, with our, uh, math department and reading department or ELA department, and with our special education department, we're doing a lot of collaboration that will see those outcomes improve, we're really trying to start with the social-emotional piece in, um, getting kids connected to the kind of services that they need.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Yeah, I just, I just would like to add that, um, in, in, um, part of, part of the district's goal is to, um, move towards a, um, a more, uh, social, uh, justice, um, atmosphere, uh, environment, and, uh, part of that, uh, part of that requires that we get, uh, help from, uh, groups or organizations that can help us, um, uh, level out the playing field, uh, get us some help for, uh, particular, um, subgroups of our district, and, um, it's no, um, it's no, um, how would I say, it's no surprise that, um, that we need to spend, unfortunately, we need to spend some money, um, on, for example, special education, we need to spend some money, uh, on, uh, our African-American students, we need to spend money, we have the need to spend resources, um, where, where it's needed, and in a perfect world, we wouldn't have to spend this money, we could do it all in-house, but we can't do everything in-house, so at the very least, um, working together with, with, uh, with these groups, maybe down the road, maybe the district can, can, uh, can learn enough to, uh, not have to, to learn from this and, and, and not have to spend this, this, um, these resources, um, but, the need is definitely there, and, and I think this, this money warrants us, uh, using it, uh, for this purpose. I know that we've done some work with Clay Counseling in the past, um, I think, uh, some of the other groups involved have worked with the district in the past, as long as they're producing, and as long as, you know, they're helping us, uh, for what they're being contracted for, I'm all for it.
My, my question was not about spending the money, my question was about the lack of details that, uh, made me understand what the program was, so now I understand what the program is, we're good.
All right, any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next we go to item K2, approve an agreement with Curriculum Associates LLC for thirty days of training at a maximum of six hours each day of eye-ready professional development for all teachers and administrators, effective August 29th, 2019, through June 30th, 2020, at a cost of sixty-four thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars, to be paid for by the general fund.
Move to approve?
Second.
Questions or comments? And just for, for clarification, this is professional development for all teachers and administrators. No more questions and comments, all in favor?
Aye.
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 And thank you for bringing it forth.
Next we go to, uh, item 3, approve resolution number 192006, adopting Melrose Rouge Community Facility Act of 1982, local goals and policies at a cost, uh, at no cost to the district. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Questions or comments?
Aye.
Again, Melrose is, uh, to define it, it's a fee charged for services-
It is tax-deductible.
For a community to improve the landscape, et cetera, uh, I just hope that the Melrose is not impacted on existing communities.
No.
See, so I just want to make sure that's clear, so anybody listening doesn't, uh, get apprehensive, thinking that their area is going to be taxed, this is for new developments.
Right.
Excellent thought.
Thank you.
I lived in, I live in what used to be Melrose, and, um, it was mainly for the infrastructure, when they start moving that dirt, it's extremely expensive, and the people buying the homes, you know, wind up paying for that.
Would you like to add?
Good evening, um, Steven Gald with California Financial Services, um, I am a consultant that's working with the school district in the, um, establishment of these goals and policies, as well as the formation of a community facilities district, um, to encompass a planned residential development at the, um, edge of the district's current boundaries. There will be a number of, uh, action items on the agenda this evening, um, all related around the formation of the CFD. Um, to provide a little bit of clarification and additional support to what the board members were discussing, um, the Melrose Community Facilities District Act, um, does allow public agencies to form special taxing districts on specific areas of land, in this case, and, um, as planned going forward, it would only be property, um, that is currently in the planning stages, so yet to be developed. Um, the, the property that we're initially talking about today is, if you went out there, it's just dirt, uh, just dirt. The purposes of the Melrose formation is specifically to provide finance, uh, funding to the school district, to help the district pay the costs associated with the impact of the new, um, enrollment that'll be generated by the development. In general, across the state, school districts, um, like Rialto Unified, struggle every day to meet the needs of new, um, community members, because the current system of collecting developer fees just does not generate enough funding. Um, the Melrose is a tool where the development community and the school district can partner together to make sure that when those homes are built and the students arrive, um, that we've received enough funding to build the seats, and we can provide, um, school facilities that are up to the quality standards of the district.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So-
Comment? You know, I understand the concept there, but it just, you know, that's what we are taxpayers for, it shouldn't come out of somebody buying a new home, it should come out of all of us who are taxpayers, should come out of Sacramento, should not come out of those people, the first-time buyers buying a home, so, I know some communities, they do that, they improve their landscape, that's one thing, but, um, you know, this is a public entity here, and, we all share with the benefits, because our kids get, uh, educated, and taxpayers of California should flip that bill, not just the first-time buyer buying a house, that's just a comment.
Prop 13, my brother.
So is he going to be standing here for these other questions, too?
Just in case, yeah.
Okay, then I have, I'll take one.
Before you get asked now.
No, no, we gotta, we gotta, we gotta deal with this, uh, item first, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next we go to item 4, K4, approve resolution number 192007, stating its intention to establish a community facilities district, CFD, and to authorize the levy of special taxes at no cost to the district.
Move to approve?
Second.
Any, uh, questions or comments?
Yes, okay, so now, so here on the levying of special taxes, so what does all this mean, and I need to ask that question-
And I need to ask that question, because I've got a whole bunch of forms here, including this big piece of paper, that requires me to sign it. And I don't know what the heck all this stuff is, and I'm not gonna sign it till I understand what it is. I've read the documents here, but what does this actually mean?
Okay. So, um, the school district, staff, and financing team have negotiated with the owners of the Lidle Creek specific plan. The Lidle Creek specific plan will ultimately include 6,260 residential units, estimated to generate over 3,500 students for the, for the school district. What we have negotiated is the terms for a Melrose Community Facilities District on the first 776 residential lots to be constructed and within the master plan area. Um, the name of the development at this point, and likely changes as they go to market, is the El Rancho Verde project.
Okay. So, okay. So, that's what I was gonna say. So, you're speaking about the Lidle Creek development, Lidle development, which I'm thinking up past the freeway, but this is around the El Rancho Verde, is the documents that I have here.
North of Riverside, north of Riverside Avenue.
So, this is all still, even though the title is there, this is still the El Rancho, um, Verde properties over on the other side of-
Where the golf course used to be.
No, I know where it is. That's why I'm trying, but the, so I need to understand.
Yeah.
Yeah, I get that.
Correct. I think, I think where, um, some of the confusion comes in is, because I think that they're similar owners as the properties were developed.
Exactly.
Yeah. What, the, the area that we're talking about is currently undeveloped and going through the approval process at the city. Um, the first, uh, just the first small piece of that, the 776 units, is the property that you are considering the formation of a community facilities district over at this time. The negotiations with the developer continue on the balance of the property for potential future CFDs, as well as the siding for potential, uh, new schools in that area as well. Uh, but tonight, all the actions just, just focus on that first 776 residential units.
Okay. So, my next question is just, I know there was, has been over the last several years, really controversy over that particular development of that property, specifically around those homes that, the, and the, and the density of the homes that are there. Have we now resolved our issues with the city in reference to the density of those properties there? And are we in alignment in the re, you know, in our city around what's going on? Or we, no?
So, as I, yeah. I think-
Well, I'm just saying, I don't, I'm not-
No. It's, it's a great question. So, um, at the risk of saying something that's inaccurate, this is what I believe is the case. The entire project is moving forward to get approval from the city for 6,260 units. On the ba, the, what you're considering today is the formation for the first 776 units, which has been approved as planned by the city. There are, as I understand it, open questions regarding the balance of the project.
Okay.
Many of those questions resolve, revolve around public infrastructure, but some of them still revolve, uh, revolve around land use. So, densities, types of units, affordability, those types of components. There are, they are still moving forward, the, the, the city and the developers to negotiate the terms for the balance of the project. What we are dealing with today is the component that the city has approved-
Okay.
-and the density that is currently approved on the project.
Okay. And so, that's what I wanna know.
Yes.
Because I know that it is in phases. This particular, you, this particular portion that we're voting on now is for the approved portions-
Correct.
-that have already been approved for the density, whatever, whatever the development is planned right now for this particular portion, not the whole, um, all the parcels that are behind, um, behind six, okay.
Correct. Because the, the one thing to highlight for, from the district's perspective is, we still have work to do on the balance regarding potential school sites, location, size, configurations, all those types of things. So, that's, as we move, uh, start this process, it's kind of the first, I guess, the end of the first step with the developer, to then work through all of those other questions.
Is the developer gonna build us a school?
Um, we have, we, that, uh, developer-built school has been discussed, but it's, everything's still kind of varying the preliminary stages.
Rosina Ranch, developer build a school for San Bernardino City Unified?
Correct. Correct. So, um, that was a solution that was discussed preliminarily. To date, what the developers is, have told, uh, the district and the team, and the district's team, is simply that they're, um, dedicated to making sure that those schools get built.
That doesn't sound like they're committing to-
Right.
That, I'm a business person, it doesn't sound like very much of a commitment.
Yeah. It's a process, for sure.
Okay.
Yeah. But we are, uh-
You guys can try, though.
We're continuing to work with them on it, for sure. And this is, again, um, one of the things I would highlight is that this is on the first part of the project, but one of the critical parts of the negotiation in this was opening up that conversation and that process to say, you know, okay, this is fine, but what are we gonna do on the balance of it? And specifically, what are we doing with those school sites? And the, uh, Rosina Ranch came up several times in conversation.
Yeah. Especially, I mean, this is gonna be, I, I doubt they're gonna be, uh, first-time buyer homes. I mean, this is supposed to be the new north Rialto Hills, uh, you know? Hopefully, the developer can at least help with some of that cost and, uh, the facilities that are gonna be required for, for all of that, you know, for, uh, for all of those students that are gonna be entering the district.
Yeah. I think what they've communicated to us-
We're already maxed out at a lot of our schools.
Right.
Yeah. Is that building quality school facilities within the boundaries of the specific plan, they see it as a critical component to them marketing homes. And I think that that's kind of where, where we're all on the same page. It'd be very difficult to sell, um, over 6,000 homes without a school.
So, but the current development that has been approved by the city does not include a school in those, in that development.
Correct.
And we're trying to authorize and move forward on the building of the 6,000 with no school attached to it, and there are no plans yet for the other parcels, and yet they have not been authorized by the city to say this can happen in that area.
Correct. The item tonight is just for the first 776 units, which is the first small track of homes in that area. The balance of it is still going through the approval process. We're still discussing that with the developer. All of that's going on. What the, the, um, the formation of a CFD for the 70, 100, 776 units does, is it generates significantly more funds for the school district to ultimately build those school, that school in the balance of the project? And again, sets the table to continue that communication and that working hand-in-hand with the developers, they, as we move through that process. But we have, um, expressed to the, uh, developer that that's a critical piece of, of moving forward, for sure. I mean, that is really the, that's the big problem, um, that we're working on.
And you're the person who's representing our district?
Correct.
With the, with the land developers?
Correct. I work in concert with, uh, district staff, with Mohammed's office, uh, the district's council in this area, um, DWK, and we work collaboratively, our team and then this, the developers' team, to try to find solutions to challenge.
The board, we have our legal counsel present, you know? He's right in the room.
Well, let's hear from our legal counsel.
I think, uh, Mr. Gald is, uh, Steve has covered it very succinctly and directly. I think, um, he's been the lead on the actual negotiations, negotiations with the developer. As he pointed out, at this point, I think we're probably getting 40% plus more than if we just collect the developer fees via the mitigation agreement that we're talking about. So, with the formation of the CFD, you're gonna be getting more than you would be entitled to just under the developer fees, which the developer could proceed by just paying developer fees and not paying this extra amount. But via the CFD that we're talking about, uh, today's just the first meeting. Well, you're gonna see us again in October for a public hearing, more information on the costs, more information on the details at that point, and there'll be an election by the landowner at that point. So, today's just, uh, resolutions of intention to continue with the process.
How many houses have to be built before they're gonna start building a school?
So, we, yeah, so we, we've, um, started, that is a, uh, we have started conceptually the process of talking about that with the developer. It really is a question, it's a two-edged question, because, uh, from the district's perspective, if we had the money, we would build the school just as soon as we could build it. However, if we have, if the developer provides less money, we're, we won't be able to build the schools quickly. So, the balance in the process, we've talked about anywhere from, you know, 1,000 units in the development to 2,000, 2,100 units. Again, it depends in that process, the commitment we're making to the community to build the school versus what the commitment of the developer is making to the district to provide the funds to build the school. Um, what we focus on is not putting the district in a position where they're being asked to do something without the money. And that's kind of the balance.
And that's kind of where we're at.
Yeah. Currently, that, um, we believe that on an interim basis, the district will be able to find, um, housing for the, this first 776 units worth of student generation. Um, but as we move into the bigger part of the project, we kind of start going into the red in the way of seats. So, that's when we'll, again, the idea is to have something in place before they pull permits, the first permit in that next phase, that next piece, and we'll know at that time what that timing looks like and how do we do it from a financing standpoint.
And just, just so the com, so the com, and I guess this is a question for Mohammed, uh, or I don't know who it is, but, so, 770 or whatever amount, 70, those amount of students in our district right now, no school new built, we have the capacity to house 700-something more kids right now?
Where?
And where, and, and is that include busing? Because if they're coming from there, their likely schools would be Trap, Hugh Banks-
Carter.
Yeah. Carter, and, yeah, Cold. So, what does that look like? A seven-
So-
Go ahead.
Oh. It's 776 residential homes.
Right.
At build-out, we expect that it would be less than 300 students, K through 12. So, in, in, in-
Single-family homes?
It's a combination-
Think they're not coming with kids?
Uh, it's a combination of, what we use is, we use the district's, um, historical student yield factor for that calculation. It is a combination, the, the 776 units is a combination, I would call them single-family homes, all of them, but it's a combination of what we would typically call single-family detached and what they call motor court homes. So, very tightly built, single-family detached. Um, and again, uh, this number of u, this number of units generates the students based on the district's existing facilities capacity enrollment that we could mitigate the impact of without going, really starting to build or, or put relocatable or temporary classrooms in. However, it's right, it's right there. So, as we move forward, we do need to identify additional, um, projects and the funds to, to build those projects. Again, that's, this is, this all, this, this, the whole process is moving towards that by, by starting at the beginning, which is, how do we maximize the amount of funding available to, to, uh, plan for and build the facilities to mitigate that impact?
My last question is, you mentioned about the, this is the first step, the next meeting, oh, you mentioned it. Talked about the next meeting, you'll be talking about the fiscal impact and what those dollars look like in this project in reference to us in the school, in our cost. Yes? No? Is that what you're?
Yes. There'll be a CFD report that's part of the, the next step, and that's gonna have more of a cost.
Enter the microphone, please, for the public.
There'll be a CFD report that's gonna be part of the next, uh, board meeting, and that is gonna contain more information on the cost that we're talking about for the facilities, the cost to house the students, so that'll have more detail in terms of, um, what the additional facilities are gonna cost.
Mr. President, Dr. Avila had, uh, some input?
They, they've answered my question regarding, uh, whether the new development took into account the existing capacity of, uh, the schools adjacent to the, the project. Now, just one question, uh, Mohammed, if, I know we're re, uh, we're changing the attendance boundaries-
Yes.
-and that was also factored into the, the decisions for the, uh, changing of the boundaries. Is that correct?
That's correct, but, uh, we, we looked at the, the numbers of the, the timing of the, the buildings, homes. Were we taking into consideration, again, with our north side of the Rialto, as we know, we have a space available. So, as, Mr. Walker, your, your point is valid, where this is gonna be placed.
Right.
Look at our, our overcrowding in the, in the, in the south side of the Rialto. So, we believe with this project, we, we could, uh, have a space for our students, incoming students for, uh, our existing schools.
Is it in writing that they have to build this school? I mean, so we know we're gonna get it?
No, no, they're, they're negotiating it. So far, we're getting 40% more so than we would, uh, previously, um, but you, you mentioned that, uh, the developer, uh, doesn't have to, um, uh, kind of meet us halfway and can just proceed with, um, only charging the, uh, the developer, only paying the developer fees, uh, to the district. But, I, I, I'm kind of confused, because if that's all they, if they didn't have to, then why are they, why are we even going through this process?
President, before he answers that, may I please ask that our student board member be excused as past nine o'clock? And I'm sure he has quite a bit of work to get done. So, if he can please excuse himself.
If you want to, if you wanna stay, it's up to you, but nobody's kicking you out.
Hey.
All right.
Homework. So, uh, a couple of, a couple of pieces. So, going back, um, I do wanna stress, what the board is, is considering at this time is our mitigation terms and the formation of a community facilities district only for the first tract of homes within the specific plan. So, we're only dealing with the economics today, or tonight, for the first seven, slightly over 700 residential units.
Okay.
The question, I think, um, that Vice President, um, O'Kelly had was, what are we approving, what are we agreeing to, and what has the developer agreed to as of today regarding the balance of the project and specifically the construction of facilities, either in the boundaries of the specific plan or fairly close, given the sheer amount of, of residential homes and student generation? Those discussions are ongoing. Those discussions are ongoing. Um, as was mentioned earlier-
Talk is cheap.
Yes. Yes. So, a, as, as mentioned earlier, the city has allowed the developer to move forward on this piece, and while they continue to work on the balance of the piece, which makes it critical from a timeline perspective that the district do the same. If the district does nothing, the developer would simply build these units and pay the developer fee. Currently, the district is estimated to receive approximately $8.9 million in facilities funding from this CFD over the first five years. In comparison to the developer fee, that's $2.6 million more that can be used to ultimately build that facility when, after we negotiate timing and those types of things. The second component, um, that the board president asked was, well, why is the developer doing it? Why don't they just pay the developer fee? There are a number of reasons why developers would work with a school district to do something like this. In this instance, it's simply the case that this developer believes that they will need to facilitate the funding and construction of facilities, the school facilities in the specific plan. They believe that ultimately, that's where this is going. They're going to have to do it. They're gonna have to build the school, or give the money to build the school, or do another tax, or do something to build the school.
Their belief is correct.
Yeah. Correct. So, in their mind, what this does, it did, this gives, this reduces the amount of financing that they have to do on the next phase by $2.6 million. So, they're saying, well, if I give the district $2.6 million more today on these first 700-plus units, then whatever I have to pay them on the balance of the project is $2.6 million less, because we'll have the money from the first phase to apply to the second phase and subsequent phase. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. But it'd be better for us to get more money in the next phase instead of having to discount it from the first. You know what I mean?
Correct. Correct. Yeah. Ideally, um, we would have the ability to simply hold up the approval of the project at the city, unless the, the developer paid us what, actually, we actually needed to build the facility. However-
Which is how much?
That's up to him, not you, right?
Well-
School facilities, they all have that.
SB 50, uh, Senate Bill 50 limits the ability of a school district to unilaterally impose developer mitigation to only, um, the state formula. And the state formula, as calculated, just doesn't meet it. So, this is kind of, Rialto, as well with all school districts in the state of California, are in this, um, forced collaboration with the development community. Look, going out there, trying to find developers that are willing to work with school districts to find developers that are willing to work with school districts to help fund this gap between what the state law allows us to impose on them unilaterally and what is really needed to house the students.
So he's actually averaging across all the project.
Correct.
That way, the first project doesn't overpay housing-wise, or the second, or the third, or the fourth.
Correct. It's also, was a critical point to them, that ultimately, when the facilities in the other, in the back phase of the project are built, that these students are given the opportunity to attend that school as well. That that would be the, or those schools, because there'll be more than one, that would be the community schools versus having a development where this 700 students, 700 homes are in one category and all the bounds are in another category.
More than likely, within the next five years, we'll have to look at the boundaries again, after Phase Two, I believe. The timing of the committee was about five years out.
Yeah.
To go over the elementary schools again.
Well, and I will tell you, I've been working with the school district on this project for less than a year. When I started, the number of residential units was 2,800, 2,800 within the boundaries of Rialto Unified School District. As today, the current, the last iteration was 6,260. So it gives you an idea of the, I mean, these things are changing all the time. Like you said, the cities, there's a push and pull with the city, more density, less density, more expensive homes, less expensive homes, more commercial, less commercial. So not only will we have to revisit it based on those factors, but also there are likely to be significant changes as they go through that city process. And, you know, even with us, as we talk to them about school sites, if our school site gets bigger, that's less homes. If they move it, they may be able to put more.
I just would like to suggest, we appreciate you guys being here tonight and doing as best as you can to explain to us the process. But what I'd like to suggest to the board, rather than continue to stay on this item, we have more items to go through tonight, and we're going to be going back into closed session, out of finished discussion on a particular closed session item. I would like to suggest, if I may, that we possibly schedule a workshop for the board to get better, become better knowledge on this process and be able to ask millions of more questions and get millions of more answers and know exactly what we're doing every single step of the way, because this is something we definitely don't want to, this is something that we definitely don't want to just leave up to everybody else to do. You know, at the end of the day, the bug stops with us, and we want to make sure that we fight for the district for every single penny, because at the end of the day, it's not the city that's going to be responsible for educating the kids and making sure the resources are there, it's the school district.
Right.
You know, and if the developer's going to, you know, meet us halfway, or, you know, be as generous as the Rosanna Ranch developer, or some of the other developers who are building schools in these new communities, you know, that's a different subject. So I would just suggest that rather than continue to go on with this specific matter, we approve the items tonight, and then we schedule a workshop or a study session for the board to be able to have these gentlemen come back and bring their whole team and, you know.
Go ahead.
Just a quick comment, so that we're on the same page. To my understanding, the longevity of this project is somewhere between 10 and 20 years.
Twenty.
So, you know, one of the issues here would be, you know, timeline. That would definitely be in order to help facilitate our decisions. You'll be here. That's all. That's all I want to say, just to remind that this is not a project that's going to be completed overnight.
Yeah, but what we decide today can impact 10, 20 years from now.
I get it.
Okay. If nothing else, we thank you, gentlemen. Nobody else? Okay. Thank you, guys. Thank you. What item were we on again?
The second. What is that?
Melrose?
No. Number four.
Number four. Approved Resolution Number 192007 stating its intention to establish a Community Facilities District, CFD, to authorize levy of special taxes at no cost to the district. We had a first and a second vote by board members.
Aye.
Next, we go to Item Five, Approved Resolution Number 192008 stating its intention to incur bonded indebtedness in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $12 million within proposed Community Facilities District, CFD Number 2019-1 of the Rialto Unified School District at no cost to the district. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Questions or comments?
So this is one of the areas that I feel that we need more conversation about. This is saying that we're saying that we are going to, bonded indebtedness, and that means we're going to have to float another bond, right? Because these are the other questions.
But that's what this is all about.
I know, but that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, just real quick.
You have a conversation.
Just real quick.
We haven't had a conversation about this.
So this resolution approves a maximum amount of bonded indebtedness for this particular Community Facilities District. This does not affect the bond indebtedness of the district at large, and it will, so it will be limited to the CFD, and it will be one of the components that's approved by the special election by the landowner at the next, at the October board meeting. It sets the maximum amount of bonds that could be issued, not the amount of bonds that will be issued. The amount of bonds that will ultimately be issued by the CFD will be a function of the amount of taxes that could be generated within the development. As an example of the development, if we form the CFD today and nothing gets developed ever, the approximate amount of bonds that will be issued is zero, and then so forth and so on. The CFD, when it issues debt, it's separate and aside from the school district, so it can only issue debt up to an amount that it could support through the collection of taxes within the boundaries of this 700-plus unit.
It would be paid by property taxes from the purchaser of the new homes.
Right.
The tax will be levied within the boundaries of the CFD specific. Those taxes would then be the revenue stream to repay the bonds. This particular bond authorization. Correct.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we go to Item Six, Approved Resolution Number 192009 approving and ordering the recording of a boundary map of proposed Community Facilities District Number 2019-1 at no cost to the district. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments?
This is the big map, right here?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we go to Item Seven, Approved Bond Resolution 192010 that authorizes the issuance of the district's 2019 bonds in a principal amount not to exceed the $29,358,000 amount remaining of the 2010 Measure Y Bond Authorization at no cost to the district. Do we have a motion and a second?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Questions or comments?
For the public, these are different bonds. These have to do with the school indebtedness from 2010 that we approved, and this is another issuance. So a different topic than the ones we just approved.
This is a Measure Y bond, and this is the remaining balance we are now moving forward to.
This is what's left of it.
This is left, correct. And to build our projects, we have, we could not build. So we're moving forward to selling the bond, the remaining balance of the $98 million bond.
Good.
It has nothing to do with the project.
The other thing.
Of course. District bond.
Of course.
Our bond.
I think everybody here remembers that bond.
Oh, yes.
Alrighty. Thank you, Mr. Islam, for clarification. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we go to Item Eight, Approved the recommendations of the administrative hearing panel, case numbers 18, 19, 24, 17, 18, 17, 16, 17, 61, and EE 1920 and 1. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second. Aye, whatever.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next regular, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Rialto Unified School District will be held on Wednesday, September 11th, 2019, at 7:00 PM at the Dr. John R. Castellunas Education Center, 182 East Wounded Avenue, Rialto, California. Materials distributed presented to the Board of Education at the board meeting are available upon request from the superintendent's office. And this time, we're not going to adjourn, we're just going to go back into closed session. Do we have a motion to?
Move to go back, return to closed session.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Forgot about that.
I forgot about that.
Hello everyone and welcome to the 2019-2020 school year. Yes, the 2018-2019 school year came and went and here we are, again initiating what promises to be another exciting and productive school year. For those of you new to the district, welcome to the Rialto family. In this address, I will highlight some of the many successes we experienced as a school district this past year, followed by a list of the five major areas we will focus on over the coming months. I will conclude by touching on the three foundational virtues that will fuel our journey throughout the school year. Last school year, we witnessed a number of students and staff members recognized for their level of excellence. We also saw the completion of numerous projects that enhanced the work and learning environments for our staff and students. In the area of technology, the district was able to complete the following projects. And in the area that many people pay attention to, student outcomes, we accomplished the following. Preliminary data shows an increase in graduation rate and A through G rate. Meanwhile, final data shows math scores increasing by 3% and reading scores increasing by 3%. While 25 of the 29 schools increased in either math or reading, 14 schools increased in both math and reading. A big congratulations to these schools for keeping our district moving forward. For the 2019-2020 school year, the focus will continue to be on math, reading and literacy, with special and deep attention paid to African-American students, students with special needs, and English learners. We will continue to expand STEAM education and promote and invest in creativity and innovation among students and staff alike. And we will further our efforts to ensure the successes we have experienced with PBIS are consistent throughout the school district. I want every teacher and every other staff member to feel that the district values expectations for students and the sanctity of the classroom. But I want to make sure the district does not revert back to the days when students, for the most part, were disciplined with suspension for pretty much anything, even the most trivial infractions. Remember that behaviors are learned, and as educators, we have a moral responsibility to shape the conditions that will enable students to make appropriate decisions all the time. These conditions may include modeling the behavior, being mentors to students, and offering opportunities for students to reflect and understand that poor choices lead to consequences. In accord with the district's mission, which as you can see includes ensuring each student achieves personal and career fulfillment, and safe and engaging learning environments, and the first parameter in our strategic plan, which states, "We will make all decisions in the best interest of students." When serving students, we are compelled to practice high expectations for ourselves. And for those who deal with student behavior, it means using alternatives to suspension. And when suspension is necessary, it must be accompanied by actions that address the behavior so that the behavior does not reoccur. A suspension with an independent return to school often invites repeated behavior. Compassion. This means to practice commendable customer service, to be polite and respectful to others, to show compassion by doing something cool for someone in need, like buying someone coffee just because you want to. Being positive and uplifting, and smiling and greeting those you encounter with kind words. Freedom. Freedom means being at peace with yourself. Your values are centered and your purpose is noble. It means you know your job better than anyone else. It means being a risk-taker, one who explores and takes chances. It means you are creative or innovative. You challenge the status quo. You are different. But as educators, it means being free in the spirit of the strategic plan, which means to be free in the best interest of students. Kindness. Rialto kindness. Kindness in its fullest expression exists when its two elements, empathy and personal honor, become one. Empathy means having the capacity to understand or feel what another person is experiencing. It is exemplified by being good, helpful, and considerate towards others. Essentially, it means being a nice and caring person. Personal honor is to have self-discipline and respect for one's conduct. It is exemplified by being punctual and having presence and commendable work ethic. For educators, honor is exercising one's full powers to create conditions that generate new opportunities. It means being at work and on time every day, while having agency to create policies, formations, or lessons that will have tremendous and lasting impact on others, especially students. So there you have it. Some highlights from last year, our focus for this year, the district's commitment to STEAM and creativity, our efforts to maintain high but sensible expectations for student behaviors, and our three foundational virtues, which includes kindness, the type of kindness that we in Rialto aspire to generate. Hello everyone and welcome to the 2019-2020 school year. Yes, the 2018-2019 school year came and went and here we are, again initiating what promises to be another exciting and productive school year. For those of you new to the district, welcome to the Rialto family. In this address, I will highlight some of the many successes we experienced as a school district this past year, followed by a list of the five major areas we will focus on over the coming months. I will conclude by touching on the three foundational virtues that will fuel our journey throughout the school year. Last school year, we witnessed a number of students and staff members recognized for their level of excellence. We also saw the completion of numerous projects that enhanced the work and learning environments for our staff and students. In the area of technology, the district was able to complete the following projects. And in the area that many people pay attention to, student outcomes, we accomplished the following. Preliminary data shows an increase in graduation rate and A through G rate. Meanwhile, final data shows math scores increasing by 3% and reading scores increasing by 3%. While 25 of the 29 schools increased in either math or reading, 14 schools increased in both math and reading. A big congratulations to these schools for keeping our district moving forward. For the 2019-2020 school year, the focus will continue to be on math, reading and literacy, with special and deep attention paid to African-American students, students with special needs, and English learners. We will continue to expand STEAM education and promote and invest in creativity and innovation among students and staff alike. And we will further our efforts to ensure the successes we have experienced with PBIS are consistent throughout the school district. I want every teacher and every other staff member to feel that the district values expectations for students and the sanctity of the classroom. But I want to make sure the district does not revert back to the days when students, for the most part, were disciplined with suspension for pretty much anything, even the most trivial infractions. Remember that behaviors are learned, and as educators, we have a moral responsibility to shape the conditions that will enable students to make appropriate decisions all the time. These conditions may include modeling the behavior, being mentors to students, and offering opportunities for students to reflect and understand that poor choices lead to consequences. In accord with the district's mission, which as you can see includes ensuring each student achieves personal and career fulfillment, and safe and engaging learning environments, and the first parameter in our strategic plan, which states, "We will make all decisions in the best interest of students." When serving students, we are compelled to practice high expectations for ourselves. And for those who deal with student behavior, it means using alternatives to suspension. And when suspension is necessary, it must be accompanied by actions that address the behavior so that the behavior does not reoccur. A suspension with an independent return to school often invites repeated behavior. Compassion. This means to practice commendable customer service, to be polite and respectful to others, to show compassion by doing something cool for someone in need, like buying someone coffee just because you want to. Being positive and uplifting, and smiling and greeting those you encounter with kind words. Freedom. Freedom means being at peace with yourself. Your values are centered and your purpose is noble. It means you know your job better than anyone else. It means being a risk-taker, one who explores and takes chances. It means you are creative or innovative. You challenge the status quo. You are different. But as educators, it means being free in the spirit of the strategic plan, which means to be free in the best interest of students. Kindness. Rialto kindness. Kindness in its fullest expression exists when its two elements, empathy and personal honor, become one. Empathy means having the capacity to understand or feel what another person is experiencing. It is exemplified by being good, helpful, and considerate towards others. Essentially, it means being a nice and caring person. Personal honor is to have self-discipline and respect for one's conduct. It is exemplified by being punctual and having presence and commendable work ethic. For educators, honor is exercising one's full powers to create conditions that generate new opportunities. It means being at work and on time every day, while having agency to create policies, formations, or lessons that will have tremendous and lasting impact on others, especially students. So there you have it. Some highlights from last year, our focus for this year, the district's commitment to STEAM and creativity, our efforts to maintain high but sensible expectations for student behaviors, and our three foundational virtues, which includes kindness, the type of kindness that we in Rialto aspire to generate. Hello everyone and welcome to the 2019-2020 school year. Yes, the 2018-2019 school year came and went and here we are, again initiating what promises to be another exciting and productive school year. For those of you new to the district, welcome to the Rialto family. In this address, I will highlight some of the many successes we experienced as a school district this past year, followed by a list of the five major areas we will focus on over the coming months. I will conclude by touching on the three foundational virtues that will fuel our journey throughout the school year. Last school year, we witnessed a number of students and staff members recognized for their level of excellence. We also saw the completion of numerous projects that enhanced the work and learning environments for our staff and students. In the area of technology, the district was able to complete the following projects. And in the area that many people pay attention to, student outcomes, we accomplished the following. Preliminary data shows an increase in graduation rate and A through G rate. Meanwhile, final data shows math scores increasing by 3% and reading scores increasing by 3%. While 25 of the 29 schools increased in either math or reading, 14 schools increased in both math and reading. A big congratulations to these schools for keeping our district moving forward. For the 2019-2020 school year, the focus will continue to be on math, reading and literacy, with special and deep attention paid to African-American students, students with special needs, and English learners. We will continue to expand STEAM education and promote and invest in creativity and innovation among students and staff alike. And we will further our efforts to ensure the successes we have experienced with PBIS are consistent throughout the school district. I want every teacher and every other staff member to feel that the district values expectations for students and the sanctity of the classroom. But I want to make sure the district does not revert back to the days when students, for the most part, were disciplined with suspension for pretty much anything, even the most trivial infractions. Remember that behaviors are learned, and as educators, we have a moral responsibility to shape the conditions that will enable students to make appropriate decisions all the time. These conditions may include modeling the behavior, being mentors to students, and offering opportunities for students to reflect and understand that poor choices lead to consequences. In accord with the district's mission, which as you can see includes ensuring each student achieves personal and career fulfillment, and safe and engaging learning environments, and the first parameter in our strategic plan, which states, "We will make all decisions in the best interest of students." When serving students, we are compelled to practice high expectations for ourselves. And for those who deal with student behavior, it means using alternatives to suspension. And when suspension is necessary, it must be accompanied by actions that address the behavior so that the behavior does not reoccur. A suspension with an independent return to school often invites repeated behavior. Compassion. This means to practice commendable customer service, to be polite and respectful to others, to show compassion by doing something cool for someone in need, like buying someone coffee just because you want to. Being positive and uplifting, and smiling and greeting those you encounter with kind words. Freedom. Freedom means being at peace with yourself. Your values are centered and your purpose is noble. It means you know your job better than anyone else. It means being a risk-taker, one who explores and takes chances. It means you are creative or innovative. You challenge the status quo. You are different. But as educators, it means being free in the spirit of the strategic plan, which means to be free in the best interest of students. Kindness. Rialto kindness. Kindness in its fullest expression exists when its two elements, empathy and personal honor, become one. Empathy means having the capacity to understand or feel what another person is experiencing. It is exemplified by being good, helpful, and considerate towards others. Essentially, it means being a nice and caring person. Personal honor is to have self-discipline and respect for one's conduct. It is exemplified by being punctual and having presence and commendable work ethic. For educators, honor is exercising one's full powers to create conditions that generate new opportunities. It means being at work and on time every day, while having agency to create policies, formations, or lessons that will have tremendous and lasting impact on others, especially students. So there you have it. Some highlights from last year, our focus for this year, the district's commitment to STEAM and creativity, our efforts to maintain high but sensible expectations for student behaviors, and our three foundational virtues, which includes kindness, the type of kindness that we in Rialto aspire to generate. Hello everyone and welcome to the 2019-2020 school year. Yes, the 2018-2019 school year came and went and here we are, again initiating what promises to be another exciting and productive school year. For those of you new to the district, welcome to the Rialto family. In this address, I will highlight some of the many successes we experienced as a school district this past year, followed by a list of the five major areas we will focus on over the coming months. I will conclude by touching on the three foundational virtues that will fuel our journey throughout the school year. Last school year, we witnessed a number of students and staff members recognized for their level of excellence. We also saw the completion of numerous projects that enhanced the work and learning environments for our staff and students. In the area of technology, the district was able to complete the following projects. And in the area that many people pay attention to, student outcomes, we accomplished the following. Preliminary data shows an increase in graduation rate and A through G rate. Meanwhile, final data shows math scores increasing by 3% and reading scores increasing by 3%. While 25 of the 29 schools increased in either math or reading, 14 schools increased in both math and reading. A big congratulations to these schools for keeping our district moving forward. For the 2019-2020 school year, the focus will continue to be on math, reading and literacy, with special and deep attention paid to African-American students, students with special needs, and English learners. We will continue to expand STEAM education and promote and invest in creativity and innovation among students and staff alike. And we will further our efforts to ensure the successes we have experienced with PBIS are consistent throughout the school district. I want every teacher and every other staff member to feel that the district values expectations for students and the sanctity of the classroom. But I want to make sure the district does not revert back to the days when students, for the most part, were disciplined with suspension for pretty much anything, even the most trivial infractions. Remember that behaviors are learned, and as educators, we have a moral responsibility to shape the conditions that will enable students to make appropriate decisions all the time. These conditions may include modeling the behavior, being mentors to students, and offering opportunities for students to reflect and understand that poor choices lead to consequences. In accord with the district's mission, which as you can see includes ensuring each student achieves personal and career fulfillment, and safe and engaging learning environments, and the first parameter in our strategic plan, which states, "We will make all decisions in the best interest of students." When serving students, we are compelled to practice high expectations for ourselves. And for those who deal with student behavior, it means using alternatives to suspension. And when suspension is necessary, it must be accompanied by actions that address the behavior so that the behavior does not reoccur. A suspension with an independent return to school often invites repeated behavior. Compassion. This means to practice commendable customer service, to be polite and respectful to others, to show compassion by doing something cool for someone in need, like buying someone coffee just because you want to. Being positive and uplifting, and smiling and greeting those you encounter with kind words. Freedom. Freedom means being at peace with yourself. Your values are centered and your purpose is noble. It means you know your job better than anyone else. It means being a risk-taker, one who explores and takes chances. It means you are creative or innovative. You challenge the status quo. You are different. But as educators, it means being free in the spirit of the strategic plan, which means to be free in the best interest of students. Kindness. Rialto kindness. Kindness in its fullest expression exists when its two elements, empathy and personal honor, become one. Empathy means having the capacity to understand or feel what another person is experiencing. It is exemplified by being good, helpful, and considerate towards others. Essentially, it means being a nice and caring person. Personal honor is to have self-discipline and respect for one's conduct. It is exemplified by being punctual and having presence and commendable work ethic. For educators, honor is exercising one's full powers to create conditions that generate new opportunities. It means being at work and on time every day, while having agency to create policies, formations, or lessons that will have tremendous and lasting impact on others, especially students. So there you have it. Some highlights from last year, our focus for this year, the district's commitment to STEAM and creativity, our efforts to maintain high but sensible expectations for student behaviors, and our three foundational virtues, which includes kindness, the type of kindness that we in Rialto aspire to generate. Hello everyone and welcome to the 2019-2020 school year. Yes, the 2018-2019 school year came and went and here we are, again initiating what promises to be another exciting and productive school year. For those of you new to the district, welcome to the Rialto family. In this address, I will highlight some of the many successes we experienced as a school district this past year, followed by a list of the five major areas we will focus on over the coming months. I will conclude by touching on the three foundational virtues that will fuel our journey throughout the school year. Last school year, we witnessed a number of students and staff members recognized for their level of excellence. We also saw the completion of numerous projects that enhanced the work and learning environments for our staff and students. In the area of technology, the district was able to complete the following projects. And in the area that many people pay attention to, student outcomes, we accomplished the following. Preliminary data shows an increase in graduation rate and A through G rate. Meanwhile, final data shows math scores increasing by 3% and reading scores increasing by 3%. While 25 of the 29 schools increased in either math or reading, 14 schools increased in both math and reading. A big congratulations to these schools for keeping our district moving forward. For the 2019-2020 school year, the focus will continue to be on math, reading and literacy, with special and deep attention paid to African-American students, students with special needs, and English learners. We will continue to expand STEAM education and promote and invest in creativity and innovation among students and staff alike. And we will further our efforts to ensure the successes we have experienced with PBIS are consistent throughout the school district. I want every teacher and every other staff member to feel that the district values expectations for students and the sanctity of the classroom. But I want to make sure the district does not revert back to the days when students, for the most part, were disciplined with suspension for pretty much anything, even the most trivial infractions. Remember that behaviors are learned, and as educators, we have a moral responsibility to shape the conditions that will enable students to make appropriate decisions all the time. These conditions may include modeling the behavior, being mentors to students, and offering opportunities for students to reflect and understand that poor choices lead to consequences. In accord with the district's mission, which as you can see includes ensuring each student achieves personal and career fulfillment, and safe and engaging learning environments, and the first parameter in our strategic plan, which states, "We will make all decisions in the best interest of students." When serving students, we are compelled to practice high expectations for ourselves. And for those who deal with student behavior, it means using alternatives to suspension. And when suspension is necessary, it must be accompanied by actions that address the behavior so that the behavior does not reoccur. A suspension with an independent return to school often invites repeated behavior. Compassion. This means to practice commendable customer service, to be polite and respectful to others, to show compassion by doing something cool for someone in need, like buying someone coffee just because you want to. Being positive and uplifting. being positive and uplifting, and smiling and greeting those you encounter with kind words. Freedom. Freedom means being at peace with yourself, your values are centered and your purpose is noble. It means you know your job better than anyone else. It means being a risk taker, one who explores and takes chances. It means you are creative or innovative. You challenge the status quo. You are different. But as educators, it means being free in the spirit of the strategic plan, which means to be free in the best interest of students. Kindness. Rialto kindness. Kindness in its fullest expression exists when its two elements, empathy and personal honor, become one. Empathy means having the capacity to understand or feel what another person is experiencing. It is exemplified by being good, helpful and considerate towards others. Essentially, it means being a nice and caring person. Personal honor is to have self-discipline and respect for one's conduct. It is exemplified by being punctual and having presence and commendable work ethic. For educators, honor is exercising one's full powers to create conditions that generate new opportunities. It means being at work and on time every day while having agency to create policies, formations, or lessons that will have tremendous and lasting impact on others, especially students. So there you have it. Some highlights from last year, our focus for this year, the district's commitment to STEAM and creativity, our efforts to maintain high but sensible expectations for student behaviors, and our three foundational virtues, which includes kindness, the type of kindness that we in Rialto aspire to generate. Hello everyone and welcome to the 2019-2020 school year. Yes, the 2018-2019 school year came and went and here we are again initiating with promises to be another exciting and productive school year. For those of you new to the district, welcome to the Rialto family. In this address, I will highlight some of the many successes we experienced as a school district this past year, followed by a list of the five major areas we will focus on over the coming months. I will conclude by touching on the three foundational virtues that will fuel our journey throughout the school year. Last school year, we witnessed a number of students and staff members recognized for their level of excellence. We also saw the completion of numerous projects that enhanced the work and learning environments for our staff and students. In the area of technology, the district was able to complete the following projects. And in the area that many people pay attention to, student outcomes, we accomplished the following. Preliminary data shows an increase in graduation rate and A through G rate. Meanwhile, final data shows math scores increasing by 3% and reading scores increasing by 3%. While 25 of the 29 schools increased in either math or reading, 14 schools increased in both math and reading. A big congratulations to these schools for keeping our district moving forward. For the 2019-2020 school year, the focus will continue to be on math, reading and literacy, with special and deep attention paid to African-American students, students with special needs, and English learners. We will continue to expand STEAM education and promote and invest in creativity and innovation among students and staff alike. And we will further our efforts to ensure the successes we have experienced with PDIS are consistent throughout the school district. I want every teacher and every other staff member to feel that the district values expectations for students and the sanctity of the classroom. But I want to make sure the district does not revert back to the days when students, for the most part, were disciplined with suspension for pretty much anything, even the most trivial infractions. Remember that behaviors are learned and as educators, we have a moral responsibility to shape the conditions that will enable students to make appropriate decisions all the time. These conditions may include modeling the behavior, being mentors to students, and offering opportunities for students to reflect and understand that poor choices lead to consequences. In accord with the district's mission, which as you can see includes ensuring each student achieves personal and career fulfillment and safe and engaging learning environments, and the first parameter in our strategic plan, which states, "We will make all decisions in the best interest of students." When serving students, we are compelled to practice high expectations for ourselves. And for those who deal with student behavior, it means using alternatives to suspension. And when suspension is necessary, it must be accompanied by actions that address the behavior so that the behavior does not reoccur. A suspension with an independent return to school often invites repeated behavior. Compassion. This means to practice commendable customer service, to be polite and respectful to others, to show compassion by doing something cool for someone in need, like buying someone coffee just because you want to, being positive and uplifting, and smiling and greeting those you encounter with kind words. Freedom. Freedom means being at peace with yourself, your values are centered and your purpose is noble. It means you know your job better than anyone else. It means being a risk taker, one who explores and takes chances. It means you are creative or innovative. You challenge the status quo. You are different. But as educators, it means being free in the spirit of the strategic plan, which means to be free in the best interest of students. Kindness. Rialto kindness. Kindness in its fullest expression exists when its two elements, empathy and personal honor, become one. Empathy means having the capacity to understand or feel what another person is experiencing. It is exemplified by being good, helpful and considerate towards others. Essentially, it means being a nice and caring person. Personal honor is to have self-discipline and respect for one's conduct. It is exemplified by being punctual and having presence and commendable work ethic. For educators, honor is exercising one's full powers to create conditions that generate new opportunities. It means being at work and on time every day while having agency to create policies, formations, or lessons that will have tremendous and lasting impact on others, especially students. So there you have it. Some highlights from last year, our focus for this year, the district's commitment to STEAM and creativity, our efforts to maintain high but sensible expectations for student behaviors, and our three foundational virtues, which includes kindness, the type of kindness that we in Rialto aspire to generate. Hello everyone and welcome to the 2019-2020 school year. Yes, the 2018-2019 school year came and went and here we are again initiating with promises to be another exciting and productive school year. For those of you new to the district, welcome to the Rialto family. In this address, I will highlight some of the many successes we experienced as a school district this past year, followed by a list of the five major areas we will focus on over the coming months. I will conclude by touching on the three foundational virtues that will fuel our journey throughout the school year. Last school year, we witnessed a number of students and staff members recognized for their level of excellence. We also saw the completion of numerous projects that enhanced the work and learning environments for our staff and students. In the area of technology, the district was able to complete the following projects. And in the area that many people pay attention to, student outcomes, we accomplished the following. Preliminary data shows an increase in graduation rate and A through G rate. Meanwhile, final data shows math scores increasing by 3% and reading scores increasing by 3%. While 25 of the 29 schools increased in either math or reading, 14 schools increased in both math and reading. A big congratulations to these schools for keeping our district moving forward. For the 2019-2020 school year, the focus will continue to be on math, reading and literacy, with special and deep attention paid to African-American students, students with special needs, and English learners. We will continue to expand STEAM education and promote and invest in creativity and innovation among students and staff alike. And we will further our efforts to ensure the successes we have experienced with PDIS are consistent throughout the school district. I want every teacher and every other staff member to feel that the district values expectations for students and the sanctity of the classroom. But I want to make sure the district does not revert back to the days when students, for the most part, were disciplined with suspension for pretty much anything, even the most trivial infractions. Remember that behaviors are learned and as educators, we have a moral responsibility to shape the conditions that will enable students to make appropriate decisions all the time. These conditions may include modeling the behavior, being mentors to students, and offering opportunities for students to reflect and understand that poor choices lead to consequences. In accord with the district's mission, which as you can see includes ensuring each student achieves personal and career fulfillment and safe and engaging learning environments, and the first parameter in our strategic plan, which states, "We will make all decisions in the best interest of students." When serving students, we are compelled to practice high expectations for ourselves. And for those who deal with student behavior, it means using alternatives to suspension. And when suspension is necessary, it must be accompanied by actions that address the behavior so that the behavior does not reoccur. A suspension with an independent return to school often invites repeated behavior. Compassion. This means to practice commendable customer service, to be polite and respectful to others, to show compassion by doing something cool for someone in need, like buying someone coffee just because you want to, being positive and uplifting, and smiling and greeting those you encounter with kind words. Freedom. Freedom means being at peace with yourself, your values are centered and your purpose is noble. It means you know your job better than anyone else. It means being a risk taker, one who explores and takes chances. It means you are creative or innovative. You challenge the status quo. You are different. But as educators, it means being free in the spirit of the strategic plan, which means to be free in the best interest of students. Kindness. Rialto kindness. Kindness in its fullest expression exists when its two elements, empathy and personal honor, become one. Empathy means having the capacity to understand or feel what another person is experiencing. It is exemplified by being good, helpful and considerate towards others. Essentially, it means being a nice and caring person. Personal honor is to have self-discipline and respect for one's conduct. It is exemplified by being punctual and having presence and commendable work ethic. For educators, honor is exercising one's full powers to create conditions that generate new opportunities. It means being at work and on time every day while having agency to create policies, formations, or lessons that will have tremendous and lasting impact on others, especially students. So there you have it. Some highlights from last year, our focus for this year, the district's commitment to STEAM and creativity, our efforts to maintain high but sensible expectations for student behaviors, and our three foundational virtues, which includes kindness, the type of kindness that we in Rialto aspire to generate. Hello everyone and welcome to the 2019-2020 school year. Yes, the 2018-2019 school year came and went and here we are again initiating with promises to be another exciting and productive school year. For those of you new to the district, welcome to the Rialto family. In this address, I will highlight some of the many successes we experienced as a school district this past year, followed by a list of the five major areas we will focus on over the coming months. I will conclude by touching on the three foundational virtues that will fuel our journey throughout the school year. Last school year, we witnessed a number of students and staff members recognized for their level of excellence. We also saw the completion of numerous projects that enhanced the work and learning environments for our staff and students. In the area of technology, the district was able to complete the following projects. And in the area that many people pay attention to, student outcomes, we accomplished the following. Preliminary data shows an increase in graduation rate and A through G rate. Meanwhile, final data shows math scores increasing by 3% and reading scores increasing by 3%. While 25 of the 29 schools increased in either math or reading, 14 schools increased in both math and reading. A big congratulations to these schools for keeping our district moving forward. For the 2019-2020 school year, the focus will continue to be on math, reading and literacy, with special and deep attention paid to African-American students, students with special needs, and English learners. We will continue to expand STEAM education and promote and invest in creativity and innovation among students and staff alike. And we will further our efforts to ensure the successes we have experienced with PDIS are consistent throughout the school district. I want every teacher and every other staff member to feel that the district values expectations for students and the sanctity of the classroom. But I want to make sure the district does not revert back to the days when students, for the most part, were disciplined with suspension for pretty much anything, even the most trivial infractions. Remember that behaviors are learned and as educators, we have a moral responsibility to shape the conditions that will enable students to make appropriate decisions all the time. These conditions may include modeling the behavior, being mentors to students, and offering opportunities for students to reflect and understand that poor choices lead to consequences. In accord with the district's mission, which as you can see includes ensuring each student achieves personal and career fulfillment and safe and engaging learning environments, and the first parameter in our strategic plan, which states, "We will make all decisions in the best interest of students." When serving students, we are compelled to practice high expectations for ourselves. And for those who deal with student behavior, it means using alternatives to suspension. And when suspension is necessary, it must be accompanied by actions that address the behavior so that the behavior does not reoccur. A suspension with an independent return to school often invites repeated behavior. Compassion. This means to practice commendable customer service, to be polite and respectful to others, to show compassion by doing something cool for someone in need, like buying someone coffee just because you want to, being positive and uplifting, and smiling and greeting those you encounter with kind words. Freedom. Freedom means being at peace with yourself, your values are centered and your purpose is noble. It means you know your job better than anyone else. It means being a risk taker, one who explores and takes chances. It means you are creative or innovative. You challenge the status quo. You are different. But as educators, it means being free in the spirit of the strategic plan, which means to be free in the best interest of students. Kindness. Rialto kindness. Kindness in its fullest expression exists when its two elements, empathy and personal honor, become one. Empathy means having the capacity to understand or feel what another person is experiencing. It is exemplified by being good, helpful and considerate towards others. Essentially, it means being a nice and caring person. Personal honor is to have self-discipline and respect for one's conduct. It is exemplified by being punctual and having presence and commendable work ethic. For educators, honor is exercising one's full powers to create conditions that generate new opportunities. It means being at work and on time every day while having agency to create policies, formations, or lessons that will have tremendous and lasting impact on others, especially students. So there you have it. Some highlights from last year, our focus for this year, the district's commitment to STEAM and creativity, our efforts to maintain high but sensible expectations for student behaviors, and our three foundational virtues, which includes kindness, the type of kindness that we in Rialto aspire to generate. Hello everyone and welcome to the 2019-2020 school year. Yes, the 2018-2019- Yes, the 2018-2019 school year came and went, and here we are, again initiating with promises to be another exciting and productive school year. For those of you new to the district, welcome to the Rialto family. In this address, I will highlight some of the many successes we experienced as a school district this past year, followed by a list of the five major areas we will focus on over the coming months. I will conclude by touching on the three foundational virtues that will fuel our journey throughout the school year. Last school year, we witnessed a number of students and staff members recognized for their level of excellence. We also saw the completion of numerous projects that enhanced the work and learning environments for our staff and students. In the area of technology, the district was able to complete the following projects. And in the area that many people pay attention to, student outcomes, we accomplished the following. Preliminary data shows an increase in graduation rate and A through G rate. Meanwhile, final data shows math scores increasing by 3% and reading scores increasing by 3%. While 25 of the 29 schools increased in either math or reading, 14 schools increased in both math and reading. A big congratulations to these schools for keeping our district moving forward. For the 2019-2020 school year, the focus will continue to be on math, reading and literacy, with special and deep attention paid to African-American students, students with special needs, and English learners. We will continue to expand STEAM education and promote and invest in creativity and innovation among students and staff alike. And we will further our efforts to ensure the successes we have experienced with PDIS are consistent throughout the school district. I want every teacher and every other staff member to feel that the district values expectations for students and the sanctity of the classroom. But I want to make sure the district does not revert back to the days when students, for the most part, were disciplined with suspension for pretty much anything, even the most trivial infractions. Remember that behaviors are learned, and as educators, we have a moral responsibility to shape the conditions that will enable students to make appropriate decisions all the time. These conditions may include modeling the behavior, being mentors to students, and offering opportunities for students to reflect and understand that poor choices lead to consequences. In accord with the district's mission, which as you can see includes ensuring each student achieves personal and career fulfillment, and safe and engaging learning environments, and the first parameter in our strategic plan, which states, "We will make all decisions in the best interest of students." When serving students, we are compelled to practice high expectations for ourselves. And for those who deal with student behavior, it means using alternatives to suspension. And when suspension is necessary, it must be accompanied by actions that address the behavior so that the behavior does not reoccur. A suspension with an independent return to school often invites repeated behavior. Compassion: This means to practice commendable customer service, to be polite and respectful to others, to show compassion by doing something cool for someone in need, like buying someone coffee just because you want to, being positive and uplifting, and smiling and greeting those you encounter with kind words. Freedom: Freedom means being at peace with yourself, your values are centered and your purpose is noble. It means you know your job better than anyone else. It means being a risk taker, one who explores and takes chances. It means you are creative or innovative. You challenge the status quo. You are different. But as educators, it means being free in the spirit of the strategic plan, which means to be free in the best interest of students. Kindness: Rialto kindness. Kindness in its fullest expression exists when its two elements, empathy and personal honor, become one. Empathy means having the capacity to understand or feel what another person is experiencing. It is exemplified by being good, helpful, and considerate towards others. Essentially, it means being a nice and caring person. Personal honor is to have self-discipline and respect for one's conduct. It is exemplified by being punctual and having presence and commendable work ethic. For educators, honor is exercising one's full powers to create conditions that generate new opportunities. It means being at work and on time every day while having agency to create policies, formations, or lessons that will have tremendous and lasting impact on others, especially students. So there you have it. Some highlights from last year, our focus for this year, the district's commitment to STEAM and creativity, our efforts to maintain high but sensible expectations for student behaviors, and our three foundational virtues, which includes kindness, the type of kindness that we in Rialto aspire to generate. Hello everyone and welcome to the 2019-2020 school year. Yes, the 2018-2019 school year came and went, and here we are, again initiating with promises to be another exciting and productive school year. For those of you new to the district, welcome to the Rialto family. In this address, I will highlight some of the many successes we experienced as a school district this past year, followed by a list of the five major areas we will focus on over the coming months. I will conclude by touching on the three foundational virtues that will fuel our journey throughout the school year. Last school year, we witnessed a number of students and staff members recognized for their level of excellence. We also saw the completion of numerous projects that enhanced the work and learning environments for our staff and students. In the area of technology, the district was able to complete the following projects. And in the area that many people pay attention to, student outcomes, we accomplished the following. Preliminary data shows an increase in graduation rate and A through G rate. Meanwhile, final data shows math scores increasing by 3% and reading scores increasing by 3%. While 25 of the 29 schools increased in either math or reading, 14 schools increased in both math and reading. A big congratulations to these schools for keeping our district moving forward. For the 2019-2020 school year, the focus will continue to be on math, reading and literacy, with special and deep attention paid to African-American students, students with special needs, and English learners. We will continue to expand STEAM education and promote and invest in creativity and innovation among students and staff alike. And we will further our efforts to ensure the successes we have experienced with PDIS are consistent throughout the school district. I want every teacher and every other staff member to feel that the district values expectations for students and the sanctity of the classroom. But I want to make sure the district does not revert back to the days when students, for the most part, were disciplined with suspension for pretty much anything, even the most trivial infractions. Remember that behaviors are learned, and as educators, we have a moral responsibility to shape the conditions that will enable students to make appropriate decisions all the time. These conditions may include modeling the behavior, being mentors to students, and offering opportunities for students to reflect and understand that poor choices lead to consequences. In accord with the district's mission, which as you can see includes ensuring each student achieves personal and career fulfillment, and safe and engaging learning environments, and the first parameter in our strategic plan, which states, "We will make all decisions in the best interest of students." When serving students, we are compelled to practice high expectations for ourselves. And for those who deal with student behavior, it means using alternatives to suspension. And when suspension is necessary, it must be accompanied by actions that address the behavior so that the behavior does not reoccur. A suspension with an independent return to school often invites repeated behavior. Compassion: This means to practice commendable customer service, to be polite and respectful to others, to show compassion by doing something cool for someone in need, like buying someone coffee just because you want to, being positive and uplifting, and smiling and greeting those you encounter with kind words. Freedom: Freedom means being at peace with yourself, your values are centered and your purpose is noble. It means you know your job better than anyone else. It means being a risk taker, one who explores and takes chances. It means you are creative or innovative. You challenge the status quo. You are different. But as educators, it means being free in the spirit of the strategic plan, which means to be free in the best interest of students. Kindness: Rialto kindness. Kindness in its fullest expression exists when its two elements, empathy and personal honor, become one. Empathy means having the capacity to understand or feel what another person is experiencing. It is exemplified by being good, helpful, and considerate towards others. Essentially, it means being a nice and caring person. Personal honor is to have self-discipline and respect for one's conduct. It is exemplified by being punctual and having presence and commendable work ethic. For educators, honor is exercising one's full powers to create conditions that generate new opportunities. It means being at work and on time every day while having agency to create policies, formations, or lessons that will have tremendous and lasting impact on others, especially students. So there you have it. Some highlights from last year, our focus for this year, the district's commitment to STEAM and creativity, our efforts to maintain high but sensible expectations for student behaviors, and our three foundational virtues, which includes kindness, the type of kindness that we in Rialto aspire to generate. Hello everyone and welcome to the 2019-2020 school year. Yes, the 2018-2019 school year came and went, and here we are, again initiating with promises to be another exciting and productive school year. For those of you new to the district, welcome to the Rialto family. In this address, I will highlight some of the many successes we experienced as a school district this past year, followed by a list of the five major areas we will focus on over the coming months. I will conclude by touching on the three foundational virtues that will fuel our journey throughout the school year. Last school year, we witnessed a number of students and staff members recognized for their level of excellence. We also saw the completion of numerous projects that enhanced the work and learning environments for our staff and students. In the area of technology, the district was able to complete the following projects. And in the area that many people pay attention to, student outcomes, we accomplished the following. Preliminary data shows an increase in graduation rate and A through G rate. Meanwhile, final data shows math scores increasing by 3% and reading scores increasing by 3%. While 25 of the 29 schools increased in either math or reading, 14 schools increased in both math and reading. A big congratulations to these schools for keeping our district moving forward. For the 2019-2020 school year, the focus will continue to be on math, reading and literacy, with special and deep attention paid to African-American students, students with special needs, and English learners. We will continue to expand STEAM education and promote and invest in creativity and innovation among students and staff alike. And we will further our efforts to ensure the successes we have experienced with PDIS are consistent throughout the school district. I want every teacher and every other staff member to feel that the district values expectations for students and the sanctity of the classroom. But I want to make sure the district does not revert back to the days when students, for the most part, were disciplined with suspension for pretty much anything, even the most trivial infractions. Remember that behaviors are learned, and as educators, we have a moral responsibility to shape the conditions that will enable students to make appropriate decisions all the time. These conditions may include modeling the behavior, being mentors to students, and offering opportunities for students to reflect and understand that poor choices lead to consequences. In accord with the district's mission, which as you can see includes ensuring each student achieves personal and career fulfillment, and safe and engaging learning environments, and the first parameter in our strategic plan, which states, "We will make all decisions in the best interest of students." When serving students, we are compelled to practice high expectations for ourselves. And for those who deal with student behavior, it means using alternatives to suspension. And when suspension is necessary, it must be accompanied by actions that address the behavior so that the behavior does not reoccur. A suspension with an independent return to school often invites repeated behavior. Compassion: This means to practice commendable customer service, to be polite and respectful to others, to show compassion by doing something cool for someone in need, like buying someone coffee just because you want to, being positive and uplifting, and smiling and greeting those you encounter with kind words. Freedom: Freedom means being at peace with yourself, your values are centered and your purpose is noble. It means you know your job better than anyone else. It means being a risk taker, one who explores and takes chances. It means you are creative or innovative. You challenge the status quo. You are different. But as educators, it means being free in the spirit of the strategic plan, which means to be free in the best interest of students. Kindness: Rialto kindness. Kindness in its fullest expression exists when its two elements, empathy and personal honor, become one. Empathy means having the capacity to understand or feel what another person is experiencing. It is exemplified by being good, helpful, and considerate towards others. Essentially, it means being a nice and caring person. Personal honor is to have self-discipline and respect for one's conduct. It is exemplified by being punctual and having presence and commendable work ethic. For educators, honor is exercising one's full powers to create conditions that generate new opportunities. It means being at work and on time every day while having agency to create policies, formations, or lessons that will have tremendous and lasting impact on others, especially students. So there you have it. Some highlights from last year, our focus for this year, the district's commitment to STEAM and creativity, our efforts to maintain high but sensible expectations for student behaviors, and our three foundational virtues, which includes kindness, the type of kindness that we in Rialto aspire to generate. Hello everyone and welcome to the 2019-2020 school year. Yes, the 2018-2019 school year came and went, and here we are, again initiating with promises to be another exciting and productive school year. For those of you new to the district, welcome to the Rialto family. In this address, I will highlight some of the many successes we experienced as a school district this past year, followed by a list of the five major areas we will focus on over the coming months. I will conclude by touching on the three foundational virtues that will fuel our journey throughout the school year. Last school year, we witnessed a number of students and staff members recognized for their level of excellence. We also saw the completion of numerous projects that enhanced the work and learning environments for our staff and students. In the area of technology, the district was able to complete the following projects. And in the area that many people pay attention to, student outcomes, we accomplished the following. Preliminary data shows an increase in graduation rate and A through G rate. Meanwhile, final data shows math scores increasing by 3% and reading scores increasing by 3%. While 25 of the 29 schools increased in either math or reading, 14 schools increased in both math and reading. A big congratulations to these schools for keeping our district moving forward. For the 2019-2020 school year, the focus will continue to be on math, reading and literacy, with special and deep attention paid to African-American students, students with special needs, and English learners. We will continue to expand STEAM education and promote and invest in creativity and innovation among students and staff alike. among students and staff alike. And we will further our efforts to ensure the successes we have experienced with PBIS are consistent throughout the school district. I want every teacher and every other staff member to feel that the district values expectations for students and the sanctity of the classroom. But I want to make sure the district does not revert back to the days when students, for the most part, were disciplined with suspension for pretty much anything, even the most trivial of infractions. Remember that behaviors are learned, and as educators, we have a moral responsibility to shape the conditions that will enable students to make appropriate decisions all the time. These conditions may include modeling the behavior, being mentors to students, and offering opportunities for students to reflect and understand that poor choices lead to consequences. In accord with the district's mission, which as you can see includes ensuring each student achieves personal and career fulfillment, and safe and engaging learning environments, and the first parameter in our strategic plan, which states, "We will make all decisions in the best interest of students." When serving students, we are compelled to practice high expectations for ourselves. And for those who deal with student behavior, it means using alternatives to suspension. And when suspension is necessary, it must be accompanied by actions that address the behavior so that the behavior does not reoccur. A suspension with an independent return to school often invites repeated behavior. Compassion. This means to practice commendable customer service, to be polite and respectful to others, to show compassion by doing something cool for someone in need, like buying someone coffee just because you want to, being positive and uplifting, and smiling and greeting those you encounter with kind words. Freedom. Freedom means being at peace with yourself, your values are centered and your purpose is noble. It means you know your job better than anyone else. It means being a risk taker, one who explores and takes chances. It means you are creative or innovative. You challenge the status quo. You are different. But as educators, it means being free in the spirit of the strategic plan, which means to be free in the best interest of students. Kindness. Rialto kindness. Kindness in its fullest expression exists when its two elements, empathy and personal honor, become one. Empathy means having the capacity to understand or feel what another person is experiencing. It is exemplified by being good, helpful, and considerate towards others. Essentially, it means being a nice and caring person. Personal honor is to have self-discipline and respect for one's conduct. It is exemplified by being punctual and having presence and commendable work ethic. For educators, honor is exercising one's full powers to create conditions that generate new opportunities. It means being at work and on time every day while having agency to create policies, formations, or lessons that will have tremendous and lasting impact on others, especially students. So there you have it. Some highlights from last year, our focus for this year, the district's commitment to STEAM and creativity, our efforts to maintain high but sensible expectations for student behaviors, and our three foundational virtues, which includes kindness, the type of kindness that we in Rialto aspire to generate. Hello everyone and welcome to the 2019-2020 school year. Yes, the 2018-2019 school year came and went, and here we are, again initiating what promises to be another exciting and productive school year. For those of you new to the district, welcome to the Rialto family. In this address, I will highlight some of the many successes we experienced as a school district this past year, followed by a list of the five major areas we will focus on over the coming months. I will conclude by touching on the three foundational virtues that will fuel our journey throughout the school year. Last school year, we witnessed a number of students and staff members recognized for their level of excellence. We also saw the completion of numerous projects that enhanced the work and learning environments for our staff and students. In the area of technology, the district was able to complete the following projects. And in the area that many people pay attention to, student outcomes, we accomplished the following. Preliminary data shows an increase in graduation rate and A through G rate. Meanwhile, final data shows math scores increasing by 3% and reading scores increasing by 3%. While 25 of the 29 schools increased...
Thank you for hanging with us.
Do we have anything to report out of closed session?
Don't we have to reopen the session?
Dr. Avala?
No, 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 no. We need to, um, we need to close closed session first.
Okay.
So before we close closed session, do we have anything to report out of closed session?
We do not.
Okay.
Move to closed closed session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed session has been adjourned at 10:45. Now open session has been reconvened.
Move to open open session.
No, no.
Reopen.
Move to close, move to adjourn.
It's late.
Move to adjourn. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Wait, 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 wait. The next regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Rialto Unified School District will be held on Wednesday, September 11th. Did I already read that earlier? All right. Do we have a second to adjourn?
Second. What he said.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Time is 10:45.